Time being 7:01 on the 21st of October. All members of the Planning Board being present, I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, approval of minutes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes from the October 1st meeting of the Planning Board at Town Hall, I mean at the high school.
Alright, so it's October 1st, 2019 minutes, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Also, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the minutes from the October 7th Planning Board meeting.
Alright, a motion made on the October 7th meeting, do I have a second?
Aye.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, just carry the minutes. Moving to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports of Administrative Actions, do any of the members have any committee reports that they need to make?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. The local housing partnership met at Town Hall, and we discussed a number of issues, one being the listing of town-owned properties for the possibilities of making some of those lots affordable housing units. We also discussed the veterans update on the 1047 Summer Street, I mean South Street, and the 1660 Main Street properties, both being handled by Tuchbury Habitat. They're both progressing and getting ready to be completed, hopefully in the next, South Street in the next couple of months, and Main Street in the next year or so. We also discussed the 325 Marshall Street project for affordable housing, and I can speak more about that when that comes up in front of us on concept planning.
Alright, anyone else?
I'd like to ask Mr. Vitalea if you could get some information to the School Reuse Committee that I'm a member of about using the parcels for affordable housing, if possible, or the buildings for same, alright?
Sure, well, actually, the Trahan School was brought up as well, and we spoke about that possibility, you know, so maybe making it some of it affordable housing as well, but I'll get those to you, Mr. Fowler, thank you.
Okay, as long as we're still doing it, that's fine.
I...
Alright, so moving on to Agenda, no other reports, correct? Okay, so moving on to Agenda Item B2, which is proposed 2020 meeting dates for the Planning Board. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look at the packet, any comments, questions on any of these at this time?
At this moment, all set. Which five?
There was one that stuck out, but I'm not going to bring it up yet till I talk to someone about it, it's the Agenda September meeting, why we're only having one meeting now, because it's normally only July and August that we only have one meeting, September has one meeting also, and I am sure it's because it doesn't work out with the holiday, but you can, well, you can move it up a week and still get two in, because that's usually the busy time of the year, because people haven't been able to get in here because of our summer vacation, summer schedule, so.
Alright, but otherwise, every time the meeting dates is there?
Yeah.
Alright, so, what's that?
Given that end of December, Mr. Chairman.
The 7th and the 28th?
Yeah.
I mean, I doubt anybody has any idea that they're gonna have a problem with that now.
Well, that's the point. Okay.
I mean, we'll see how that 28th one works out, I mean...
Well, to be honest with you, the 7th of December, if you want to talk about that, I more than likely won't be here.
Alright.
Mr. Delaney?
What's that?
7th of December next year.
I'll be away.
Okay, so we have two members.
Alright, make sure we speak into our microphones, gentlemen, some of the audience just couldn't hear us, so please.
Alright, so, there's a question on the one meeting in September, and then there's a question on the date, the December 7th date in December.
Yep.
Okay, so... So, the 14th isn't anything, though, right, the 14th of December?
It's not holiday, yeah.
It's not, okay, so why don't we, why don't we tentatively, since it's clear that we won't have members on the 7th, why don't we switch the December meeting to the 14th, then we'll have the 14th and the 28th, there'll just be a little bit more of a lag between our November...
We won't be here the 14th either.
Okay, Mr. Fowler, would you not be here on the 14th? You won't be there here, okay, so then you know what, if that's the case, let's just leave it for the 7th, and we'll worry about it later. Okay, alright, so the only real, the only real difference is what we might do in September, we can always do that post, we don't, you know, for our purposes, we can approve these dates for now, and then deal with them later.
Yep.
Does that work?
Yep.
Alright, so then I'll take a motion on approving the 2020 calendar year meetings as submitted this evening, a motion?
Sumoed.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, alright, so that's all set for now. Moving on to Agenda Item B3, which is a non-substantial change, 1325 Main Street Discount Madness. Do you have anybody here for that? I mean, obviously, they came, so. Floor is yours, gentlemen.
My name is Brad Cerulo, at the last meeting, I appeared to request a change to the word of Section 15 of Special Permit SP, SP 2017-28, to allow a bank's requirement to have us build the property in phases, allow us to sell as well buildings. At the last meeting, it was requested that we go back to Steve Sadwick, to have him worded if he wanted it, he has done so, and we've submitted it for your review.
Alright, Mr. Ryder?
I was not here last meeting, I didn't...
Alright, so, you know what, when I do a quick...
Follow-up on the minutes, so I did follow-up on the minutes, but if you wouldn't mind taking the other members first, and I'll follow-up after.
Mr. Fowler?
I would ask, Mr. Vitalea, have you reviewed this relative to affordable housing, and are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, I think that's fine, I guess the only question I had was to make sure that they get the applications in to the, to state to have them approved, so we can add them to our totals.
Correct.
So, but, I think this is sufficient, but...
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Vitalea, with that information, which I assume that's what they'd have to say, is, it appears to me that they've tried to dot the i's across the t's to make this work for their benefit, and along with what the town is doing, what the town wants, so I'd be satisfied with that unless someone can come up with something else.
Yeah, I mean, they worked on the language, so I'm not gonna go back and forth, but we do need to figure out how to be sure that there isn't, you know, a long lag time on these kind of things, because even still, I mean, this is gonna do what everybody wants, that's fine, but it's not going to force the issue of the paperwork getting in, because it's not gonna get submitted until they're pulling permits for that mixed use, if they never get around to that, or that final phase gets pushed off, we're never gonna get the credit for the units, and yet, the development's gonna have gotten their benefit, that's, ultimately, that's my, my issue, is that, I don't have a problem with them phasing it, what I have a problem with is not getting the paperwork in, and us getting credit for it, while the units that they want to sell, the full-price ones, because obviously, that's what they want to do first, are gonna be sold, people are gonna be living in them, and what's the, what's the incentive, and what's the guarantee of getting that third phase done, and that paperwork in? I mean, this, this satisfies, you know, the bank, and, you know, that kind of thing, but I just, I still don't see how this language, the only thing you're not gonna get is an occupancy permit for the third building, well, obviously, you're not gonna get an occupancy permit for the third building until you go and build it.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, I think we all understand that, but what did Mr. Sadwick say to you? Did you talk to him?
Yes, he said that we needed to reword it to allow for the bank to get us the loan, and when we submitted this to him, this is how he, he had worded it, he said this is the way we wanted it, I worked with Anna on that.
Yep, does that work with you?
Yeah, yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, again, I, I'm fine, but I'm saying, this language still does not do what we sent them back to do two weeks ago, that's, that's the issue, I mean, it's great, they're gonna be able to get their loan, and if that's what the majority of the board wants to do, that's fine, but our original intent was that we, we don't, we were trying to put in a piece that's gonna cause the developers to get the paperwork in that we want, so we get credit for the affordable units, because we weren't getting that until they got around to bothering to put in the paperwork. This forces you to do, well, our intent was to force that to happen at the beginning, not when it got around to. This language, while allowing them to phase the project and get their loan, does not do the piece that we intended, which was, so that the town can get credit for the affordable units, until they get around to doing what amounts to Phase 3 of their project, because they're not putting any affordable units in any other building, the building, it'd be one thing if it was mixed up within the project, but they're purposely putting all of the affordable units in this building, and it's the building they're pushing off to do last. So, I'm not gonna hold up, if the rest of the board members are fine with changing the language, all I'm saying is, it does not address the issue we sent them out of here two weeks ago to address, all it addresses is how to allow phasing, and how they get their loan.
I'm sure Mr. Sadwick knew why they were sent out here, sent out of here, so why would he have said, "That's fine"?
Well, like I said, this does those other two things, it does not do the third thing, because it's saying right here, no occupancy permit for the mixed-use building will be issued, well, so what, if you don't build the third unit, the third building, of course you're not gonna get an occupancy permit, but you are gonna get occupancy permits for Building 1 and 2, you're gonna sell them, and if you bother to get around to the third piece, which, in all honesty, the commercial portion is a necessity for this, for this project, although we don't have any date by which it must be done, built in, but it is a requirement, it's what got them the units that they're building in the back in Phases 1 and 2, if they never get around to building the commercial piece...
Lose our units.
It's just basically floating out there forever, and we're never getting credit for the affordable units, the commercial building may never get built, and what do we do, at some point, are we gonna say, "Well, we're gonna pull your permit now from the two buildings we let you open"? I doubt we're gonna do that, or a future board is gonna do that.
Mr. Johnson, I beg to differ.
Okay.
It doesn't say shall be issued, shall be allowed, it said may be allowed, that's one of your legalese terms, right, because it says may be allowed, that doesn't mean we have to do it, that doesn't mean we can't run this by the bill inspector and get his support if we feel that they're doing us an injustice.
I guess, yes, I understand that it says may, but we're not gonna realize that they're not doing the third phase until the first two phases are done, and they've been issued building permits, at which point, it's gonna be too late, so the fact that they may get a building permit, I mean, an occupancy permit, more than likely is going to have happened before they start that third phase, that's the whole point, that's what they've told us, they want to build the other two, before they do the third phase, so what I'm saying is, we won't even know we should have tried to hold it up until it's too late, that's my point, again, I don't want to hold the whole thing up, you guys can do whatever you want, but...
No again, no again, we've heard this, no again, please.
Okay, well, it was important enough for us to do it when we did it, because we weren't getting the paperwork in so that we'd get credit for the affordable units, if that's no longer important, that's fine.
No one said that.
Well, this makes it null, because if we do it this way, everyone's gonna come in and want to phase their projects in a way that allows them to build the ones they can sell for full price, and get around to affordable housing when they feel like it, or can, and we aren't gonna get credit if that paperwork isn't filed, and there's no incentive anymore for that paperwork to be filed, so we're back in the old position we were in, because there is no date specific.
Mr. Johnson, I respectfully request that you ask for a vote on this, or a motion.
Alright, well, I'm gonna go around the room, because everybody didn't get to speak, we were trying to clear up what happened last time, so, have you finished, because it was your turn?
I've been waiting for you.
Are you finished, or not, I can move on if you are, if you're not, okay, Mr. Delaney?
Well said.
Mr. Vitalea?
Yeah, I, Mr. Johnson, I do understand your concern about this, but I would think that we would be able to hold up the occupancy permit if they're not gonna be progressing with the last, the phase of this project, so, when the time comes, so, but, I have no problem moving on with this, letting them get their, get their bank approval and move on, and I'm sure in the end, we'll be fine with this project, myself.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you, and I do have to agree with you, Steve, I, I'm a bit concerned, obviously, understanding this component allowed the developer to put these other units in, so, this unit being last, ultimately, I understand, we'll get through the first building, we may get through the second building, and their intent is to build the third building and the commercial unit, and the affordable units, however, something happens between that point, we are out those units, and we're already permitted, they've already have occupancy permits, and they already have sold the units, or rented units, and now the town, we're sitting there with potential apostle that's vacant, and we lost the seven units that was required as part of this project, understanding where, you mean, our affordable housing units are critical, and I, I don't understand, I guess to the applicant, I understand it's a financing thing, but can we push this to the second phase, instead of going the two units in the back, can we go one unit and then to the front unit, that way we're guaranteeing anything before you get to your third unit?
With the bank, it's, it's all just about the numbers, and the residential units in the back are going to be outright sold, and that mixed-use building is going to be held and rented, so because of the sale of the backlot ones, the bank wants to do all of those first, to secure the funding necessary to finish the project, without this approval, the bank won't give us approval.
Yet, but we're, we're taking a chance that all those units will sell, and you will have all units sold to fund the front unit, we're taking a chance by allowing this, that those sell and you're, have the funding source to fund the front units, which I'm concerned with, I mean, we haven't done this, and I think we're opening up a, you know, we're going down a road that we may not want to go, and how do we turn away the next applicant that does this? I know it's a case-by-case basis, but it's a precedent I don't think we should set.
Okay, so now it's officially my turn, even though I talked before, but, Mr. Vitalea, I understand your point, but, you know, you're typically the first one when we do these, that you do mention the commercial portion, of whether or not there's gonna be somebody for the commercial portion.
No question.
It tends to be the piece that the developers, they do it as a requirement, but it's the units are the reason the project goes through, and the incentive for the commercial portion being built diminishes when the two pieces and the two other phases are already developed, and again, with all due respect, the project was brought to us, if it hadn't been checked for financing, I don't know that that's our issue, when we were asked to approve the project, we approved it with the restrictions and the requirements that we had, so that you could have X number of units, a commercial piece, affordable housing, that's what was approved, if the financing wasn't lined up, I don't know that that's the board's issue, that you asked for approval of a project, but didn't know how it was gonna be funded, and again, the reason for this is, there is no date certain by which that third piece has to be done, that's my issue, is that you could build Phase 1 and 2, get it done, sold, you make your money, what exactly requires you, by any date, any time, out through and into, for you to build that third piece, because if you don't, the only recourse the board has is to try to go back after your permit, to pull your permit, your special permit approval for this, and I can't envision either this board or a future board taking your permit away when you have people living in two out of the three phases of the project, so that's unlikely, we still will not have gotten credit for the affordable units, there's no incentive or requirement that forces you to take care of that portion of the project, that's my issue, I mean, I'm not trying to jack up your funding, but again, this is the project you asked us to approve, now you're coming back and saying, "But we only don't wanna do part of it now, not the part you guys want, just the part we want", and I have an issue with that, because we purposely wanted this stuff done this way, so that we could get credit for the units as soon as possible, towards the 20% that we need, I'm sorry, 20%,
We'll never get there.
10% that we need, and, you know, we no longer have that guarantee here, that that's something that's gonna happen sooner, rather than potentially never, that's my issue, again, I'm only one of the five people up here, you don't need me in order to get this approved, I'm just simply saying, I don't know how we get what it is we were supposed to get out of this project, for sure, any time in a expected timeframe, once we do this, and I don't know how we go forward with other applicants saying that we want these things done, if we just wave it away, so, that's my feeling, but, you know, that's just me. So, with that, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, my opinion is, and I, and I understand your, your opinion as well, and I guess in the, in the fairness of this whole process, I would think that we would need you, as a applicant, to get all your financing in order, so that we don't get left hanging, holding the bag in this project, alright, we, we are concerned with the occupancy of the building and project, and that it be done in completion, and then we can give occupancy for the entire project, because of the affordable component, because like Mr. Johnson said, if you don't complete the project, there's nothing we can really do on our end, we have no commercial development, no affordable development, and that's part of why you got the permit in the first place, so, I mean, we can't set a precedent here by giving it to you, and not for anybody else, and not looking for the same exact process, because there's no guarantees on our end, do you understand where we're coming from?
I understand where you're coming from, um...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
To what length?
He isn't, we don't know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, if you both state your names, I'll...
I'm the Cerulo, I'm looking at it with common sense, you go to a bank, and you say, "I want to borrow money for this project", they look at it, and they say, "Okay, can you do it this way"? Now, we went to several banks, and they, they said the same thing, can you build the residential units first, because they're more marketable than the commercial building? We happen to be keeping the commercial building, okay, there is no way I'm gonna do this without building that commercial building, that's what we're gonna end up with, that commercial building, I don't know what more incentive I could have for completing this project, and as far as...
Well, the incentive would be, if you got the applications in, to the math, to the, to the state Affordable Housing Plan, and get it finalized, and we're all set.
This was brought up, because we, we rented the town to start the paperwork for the, for the affordable housing, and that's when this was brought up.
Okay.
We didn't even know this was an issue, until we were applying for the affordable housing paperwork, even, even the bank didn't enter their mind that there was a problem starting to sell the units as we were building them, this sort of blind side of us.
Okay.
So, you know, saying that, you know, we should have had the financing lined up ahead of time, this was something that we were totally unaware of, until we applied for the affordable housing paperwork, and honestly speaking, I know there's no way we can go back to the bank and say, "They're not gonna give us permission to start selling the first buildings that we're building, until we complete work on the last building, or however you want it, start work on the building", I don't know, I'm sort of caught in a between a rock and a hard place here.
As well as we are, as well, so far.
We're in this, we're in the same position, and I, I will second, I think we, we go down this road, I, I don't think it's the right thing to do, understanding there's multiple other parcels out there that this could happen with, and I understand where you're coming from, from the bank's side, but the town has to, this board has to protect this project, and this project was permitted based upon those affordable housing units, without those units, this project doesn't go forth, so, you gotta understand we're in that...
It's just me not to, not to build them, I, I don't...
What if we look for a bond, Mr. Chairman, for, for some of that money, you look for a bonded last building or something, I don't know.
Well, you've already got me putting up $20,000 bond.
So, I guess, when you say a bond, to ensure...
That it gets built, because it can get built, and we, and we maintain the bond and, and the lower building.
What's the value of the seven units? That would have to be the bond, it would be the value of those affordable units.
Yeah.
You can't get the money for the affordable units, until the other two places are built.
I understand, you couldn't get the money for the units, but also, you couldn't get the permit without the affordable units, or the commercial parcel, so I think we're...
They already have bonds, that's your security already, so...
So, we already have that?
You already have that, you know, so if they don't complete the project, then they're out their bond.
The only, well, again, the only thing is, it's a $20,000 bond, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's a fraction of the affordable...
Right, yeah.
I don't know, I, again, I, I said my, my fear, and it's not necessarily a fear of your project personally, meaning that, you know, I'm not saying that you guys might not do exactly what you're supposed to do, but we can't just treat it for just the one project, everybody we approve these for should be treated the same, is basically what I'm saying, and, you know, while you guys, I'm sure, will do what you're supposed to do, I have no reason to think you won't do what you're supposed to do, but that might be you, but what stops the next applicant, who maybe isn't as, you know, we, we don't have that faith necessarily, from asking for the same thing, and why shouldn't we grant it to them? You know what I mean, I don't, it shouldn't be based on a personal thing, you know, as to who's sitting in front of us, you know, it's basically just, how do you approach each project, so that they're all treated the same, I, I guess, I mean, again, I'm, my concern is that we need to make sure that we get these things credited to the town, and if they'll, if they can't file for the paperwork until they get to the third piece, not knowing when that third piece may be done, like you said, you, you want to keep that piece, but there's no guarantee that the economy doesn't have a problem that causes you to be unable to move on to the first, third phase, I mean, it's happened, we've had projects approved in town that fell apart, and never got built, because they never got the funding, for whatever reason, so all I'm saying is, you can't treat it as an absolute that it's gonna happen just because you say it, I mean, you want to do it, obviously, you want to use that building, but what happens if you can't sell the other units for what you hoped for, then do you have the financing to do the third phase? I don't know, but if we don't get that far, we don't get to the affordable portion, we don't get to the commercial portion, which was part of the project, so, again, I mean, you know, it's up to the board, it's not up to me, so, that's just my feeling on it, so, we're back to, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I would make a motion that we accept this new, number 15, that has been reviewed and given its, okay, we don't have anything with Mr. Sadwick's signature on it, but I believe that Anna agreed with that, yes?
Can I review that, Mr. Fowler?
So, I would make a motion that we accept this, and for the future, if we feel uncomfortable with this, let's do a better job drafting the, I mean, the Planning Board, doing a better job...
new, number 15, that has been reviewed and given its okay, we don't have anything with Mr. Sadwick's signature on it. But I believe that Anna agreed with that?
Can I review that, Mr. Fallow?
I would make a motion that we accept this and for the future, if we feel uncomfortable with this, let's do a better job drafting the, I mean, the planning board, doing a better job making sure we're protecting ourselves.
Okay, so that's your motion? Do we have a second? Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed, opposed. Two to three.
So the language submitted this evening as a non substantial change is not approved. So we're back where we were before. I'm not sure exactly what advice to give at this point. I didn't realize that we weren't going to be able to come back in with language that solved the issue.
I agree with Mr. Fallow, I think we need to do a better job by putting those stipulations in, but we have that opportunity here to put that stipulation in. The project has not been
After the fact. After the fact.
But I will agree with you, but they were getting, they got this permit based upon the commercial unit and the affordables. As, just one opinion, I think it's a road that we don't want to go down.
Chairman, I recommend that we sit down, Mr. Sadwick again, as a group or a party or yourself, Mr. Sadwick and Anna and the applicant, and resolve it. Maybe we can change this for a future meeting as far as changing the language for you and our benefit as well. Maybe we can work something out.
It remains an administrative action, so it's nothing that can't come back onto the agenda. The denial is not permanent, meaning like we denied a project. This could be back on the next meeting's agenda to be addressed. But obviously, we need more or different language.
More clarity, I think, yeah.
So, all right. Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item B4, Concept Plan 600 Woburn Street.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen. Called about one.
Just start off once you get to the mic, so.
Yeah, quite sure we're just starting. The handouts, the agenda.
Unless you have something new, we got everything that you've submitted.
Okay.
If you just both state your names to the record first and then you guys can start.
Yeah, Dominic Waldemeyer Jr.
Gene Sullivan, I'm an engineer.
Okay, floor is yours, Joe.
Yeah, in Atkinson, we don't get these before a meeting, so I wasn't sure how filled in you were, what our proposal was. But since you had a chance to at least see the highlights, what would you like me to start with? Just an overview?
Well, I mean, we have what's in front of us, but obviously, no one at home or in the audience knows what it is you're proposing. So if you want to explain what you're proposing, that would help.
Sure, and we did send, by the way, letters out. Anna and Steve Sadwick thought it might be a good idea to involve the neighbors as soon as possible. Because their probably the biggest concern, at least to me and probably from a planning perspective. So we did invite them, and I don't know how many are here, and they understand that they may or may not be able to ask questions. I've made myself available after this need me. But yeah, Gene, you want to?
Can I go over to the planning?
If you do, just take the microphone, that way you'll still be picked up.
Good evening, again, my name is Gene Sullivan. I'm an engineer from Wilmington. The parcel we're talking about tonight is 600 Woburn Street. Paul's company has been in this building for a long time. About 2002 or before the board put a small addition off the front corner. The main access off Woburn Street comes in this way. This building has been here since, what?
That was 2012.
The original building?
The original building, 1971, '72.
So in 2012, we came in and put a 10,000 square foot addition. Currently, Paul's selling their other facility in Lawrence, wants to consolidate all their operations here. So we're proposing, there's a main driveway around here now, 23,300 square foot addition off the rear of the building, which was associated loading and parking areas to support that. The neighbors Paul speaks of are really wrapping the property along Woburn Street and then Park Street is that?
Yeah, Park Ave.
Park Ave down this way and around to the back. Important things to plan in conservation. There's a wetland over here. We're respecting all the no build, the no disturb zones. Our intent is to build some underground drainage systems in the back that would overflow here and meet all the stormwater policy and so forth. The site's all sand, so it's the easiest drainage site there is. So pretty simple proposal as far as that goes. We had some informal meetings with the department heads, made some concessions or designs to help alleviate some of the fire department concerns. First of all, we added a truck turnaround at the bottom of this parking lot, so if they were back here in the event of a fire, they could get in and out. Also reviewed our sprinkling room and fire access equipment with them, and they were satisfied with where we are today. So just wanted to get some gentle feedback on anything that may be unusual or maybe have concerns about beyond what we would normally expect.
Yeah, and I think the biggest concern is the fact that the zoning was changed in 2015 to the West Neighborhood Business District from Heavy Industrial. And so along with the, I think you call it a special permit to do anything in Heavy Industry or in the WNBD, West Neighborhood Business District.
Demolished.
It has to be by special, special permit. What happened in the change from HI to WNBD is that we lost 35% allowable coverage for the building, and it went down to 15%. And so mostly the reason we're in here tonight is I want to make sure that the letter and the intent of the law to change the zone had the vision, and I believe it does, that existing manufacturing was going to be able to be allowed to be expanded. Because there were, I think there were four major manufacturing concerns in the area at the time. And so that's where it got in, and I got lengthy verboes on, you know, section 600, 6701, I guess. And the fortunate thing is several years, well, I guess the following year, you had an amendment to the zoning that allowed you as the board, and it was approved by the Attorney General, maybe they all are in Massachusetts, that you could waive the dimension table. The only issue we have, I believe, so far in zoning is that we currently occupy almost 15% of the site. So we're precluded from doing much more than, I don't know, 1,000 square foot addition, 2,000 square feet. Whereas previously, we could have gone to double our size. So, but you have been allowed, and I think it was Steve Sadwick, and I think he saw some of the feelings of the change in zoning and who's going to hinder people like us, that you have now the right to waive the dimensions of Appendix B for the coverage and other things. So we actually are going to need a waiver, and I wanted to make sure that it was something that was, you know, in the spirit of what you guys thought the zone was changed for, that we could, you know, potentially go ahead, you can't make any decisions tonight, but that it seemed reasonable. We want to go to 19% coverage. And that's from the zoning issue. From a reality issue is our neighbors on Park Ave. That used to be zoned Heavy Industry as well before the change. And we have accommodated that right along. We've kept as far back from them as we possibly could, given the land. And in this, I've made a lot of changes to the I want to keep noise and visual stuff away from residents because I think that's part of what a planning board is supposed to do amongst a few other things. So we concentrated heavily, that's the reason I think we needed the neighbors here or certainly want to talk to them. But we don't want to get any closer to them than we are currently. And we've done a few things to avoid that. We're way beyond the setbacks of buildings and pavement, and we've left a lot of room for buffers. And I continue to work on it, and I see this in additional things that we can do that I haven't even spoken to Gene about that. Coming from a planning perspective and since my personal home that's a commercial professional district, I know what I would want as a neighbor. And being on the planning board in our town, you know, you have to step off of those meetings. But you can zone in general based on what you feel people want or need for their protection. And I think what we're doing does a lot of things to accomplish that. I think as a past out that it meets all of the four criteria for the WNBD. And just I would open it up to questions, I guess, on that.
You're on my job.
Stop, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the idea of you coming into Tewksbury and staying in Tewksbury and expanding in Tewksbury. I guess my biggest concern would be with the residents that are butting your property and making sure you allow enough buffer trees or whatever to accommodate some of their concerns and needs so that we're not infringing on their yards and so forth. I know you are very close to the neighborhood to the west of you on Woburn Street. I mean, I drove up there the other day and you were in her backyard, or their backyard. So I guess one of my questions was, that last loading dock at the very end of the driveway, is that used a lot?
Not a whole lot. I mean, currently, it had been for stationary trailers to store fiber. The garage boy converted it, and the other trailer was for fiber coming back in after it was reclaimed. So that didn't have a lot of activity.
Okay. So she hasn't planted all, I guess, but
No, but a lot of the trucks back up behind the Zimmer's house to hit the docks going back to the south end of the building.
Right.
And that is probably my major concern because there's no manufacturing in this new building.
Right.
All we got left at Lawrence is warehousing and shipping. My concern is trucks going near the Park Ave neighborhood. And you've seen what we did to set the building 70 feet back, and we don't have to change our pavement, and we can live with daylight hours for trucks.
Well, I'm glad you're staying in Tewksbury and expanding in Tewksbury and growing in Tewksbury, providing some more jobs for people in Tewksbury as well. My only concern is for the neighbors that are butting you, and that their concerns will be addressed at the planning board meeting in the future. And we look forward to the plans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I also feel the same way that Rini does. I'm glad that they're using Tewksbury and they're coming here. The addition they're putting on seems to be like a plus plus for everybody. The only question I have is, what do you actually manufacture?
We manufacture non-movin textiles. You would see it in automobiles, and fortunately, the GM strike hasn't affected us too much. But the package tray under your rear window, sometimes the back of your seats, sometimes door panels, it's the fabric on the outside, the carpeting.
Okay. The other thing is, how, I guess I'm concerned about like the loading, the loading dock. You know, you gave a brief view of how many times the trucks come in. Is that pretty solid, that number that you gave us?
Yeah, I mean, that was exact on the 1.4, but that doesn't account for the trucks that go, come and go to the facility today. But that's all done at the other end, loading docks. And what this, this loading dock would basically be for bringing fiber in. And we'll get 40,000 pounds of fiber in a week or twice that. One of them would end up coming to this end of the building. We would ship out of there, maybe a trailer a day. So there's a lot more traffic going to the site than what was put in the that description. I mean, the current traffic would stay the same. And quite frankly, in the last six months, Lawrence, we stopped transshipping to Lawrence. In other words, a lot of our trucks were, there was two trucks for every truckload we shipped out of Lawrence. All we're doing is warehousing in Lawrence. So for every truck we put into Tewksbury, two loads coming out of Tewksbury as a transfer truck are gone. My concern, you know, to be quite honest, is that that 1.4 trucks a day is probably going to come out of this back loading dock that's closer to Park Ave.
Do you do all the trucking yourself or is it retail?
It's LT, it's all tractor trailers. 99%, well, except for our straight truck is full loads. So there's, even for us to get to capacity, it would only be one more truckload a day for that plant. Between all, we have three, four, currently five loading docks. We're getting rid of two, so this, it would be split between those loading docks. We're trying to channel the flow of our largest production line and second largest is in the south end of the building away from Park Ave. Our two newer lines that are quite as productive, they're a little wider, are in the north end of the building. We'd like to stage shipping and receiving at the two Avs.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brad?
Thank you. I will echo my colleagues. I think it's great that you're bringing everything to Tewksbury. As I address, my only concern is obviously the buffer, but I believe, you know, keeping the fence in that tree line is going to be significant. You know, the neighbors are okay with it. I think everything's going to be good.
Yeah, I don't know yet.
Obviously, we'll know at the meeting. But that's all I have for now, thank you.
Mr. Fallow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would almost reiterate what Mr. Ryder said. I can recall when they came into the previous loading dock a few years ago, and that's when we had them put at the end of the driveway because the trucks were churning there, the fence. And it backs up to the two houses. But the important part here is, this type of use can have a driveway within 10 feet of the law line. Something like, I forget the numbers now, but 76 or more feet away from that. So, and they're not encroaching on the wetlands to do this. I mean, not the wetlands, excuse me, the wooded area. There was a time when we thought that we could put a berm there with the fence on the berm or evergreens on the berm and everything. But when you thought about it, you'd have to take down 30 trees to put up 10 evergreens. So it just didn't work out. So I'm pleased to see that you're expanding. And I'll have to disclose, I've been in this building quite a few times. I was in the fire department, no fires. We were there for inspections. Anytime that we, and I can only say from my own experience, anytime we requested someone to meet us, because their office was in Lawrence.
Still, yes.
They would come out and sit with us, they have all the answers to all the questions we might have because they get new machinery in. From what I read now, the machinery that was there before would have been very noisier than what you now have. The new stuff is probably a lot better.
It may be. But they're noisy machines, and that's always been a concern. But, you know, we do what we can. Yeah, the new machines, what we've updated are some looms, and the looms are the loudest of machines. I don't know that we've, I mean, I said in here that we've never had a complaint. I don't know that we have, and I don't know that the police are here to say, but
I thought I read something in here that the new machines would be
Less noisy? No, I think maybe what I said is, this building actually will block any noise emanating from the
Absolutely, that's right, because you've got three walls instead of one.
Right, and this acts as a 26-foot barrier to about four or five lots on Park Ave.
Yep. And as far as the trailer trucks are concerned, from looking at how you configured that, that's going to back into the cell code.
Yes, yep.
So, and you know that you're not supposed to leave trucks running. And obviously, you wouldn't because you'd be right backed up to the trailer, the doors.
Right.
So you wouldn't be doing that, and as a state law. And this would shield any, you know, loading, offloading of the material off the back of the trailer truck right into the building. So it's not like you're taking it off over here, running it across the yard, bringing it in, right to the back of the building. So I'm very pleased to see this addition. I know you had some land in there that you talked about using before, and that's, I can't welcome you to Tewksbury because you've been here for how many years now?
Forty, I guess.
Yeah, okay.
Seventy-one, forty-five. I just maybe want to clarify one thing. The ALCO is set back seventy feet from our existing building. But there, there is no roof proposed over it.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, I understand that. And yes, he is related to the Majos. Lowell, I mean, New York and Boston.
And Boston.
In Boston.
But can I get a plug in? I have to do this because you can't find it on the internet. Dad was the, one of the ten founders of the team that's playing tonight, the Patriots.
Really?
Yeah. My brother and sister have told me, go and find it on the internet, and it's, it's not there. The ten owners, original founders and owners.
Oh, no kidding?
No, so we're going to try to change that.
We'll talk to Mr. Craft. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, my turn. With these concept meetings, you know, usually they get problematic when we have a lot of issues. Otherwise, we all end up saying, I agree with the last person, which is pretty much the same for me. The one thing I'll say, and just so it's, so you sort of have your ducks in a row, when you come in with your formal, it is best if you've spoken to the, you know, the abutters and have some ideas of what they're looking for, so you're not coming in cold at the meeting, and then we have to deal with it all here. Because it just speeds the process along. If you know what they want, and if you're willing to do it, moves this process along. If not, then we figure it out. But best to do that, you know, when you have an idea. I think that the, you know, the buffering and that kind of thing is going to be the most important thing to offset what you're asking for, because again, you're asking for a waiver, so we're going to ask for X, Y, Z, whatever that is as the trade-off. In this case, most likely, it's going to be, how do we make sure we impact the neighbors as minimal as possible, if at all? You know, and, you know, considering the percent change, I have less of an issue with this than if you, somebody was trying to get all the way back up to...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. You know, the change here percentage-wise is very minimal compared to where it used to be very recently. So I have less of an issue for that reason, because we're not shooting the moon, trying to get all the way back up to, you know, what was changed. So that, that helps. You know, so I mean, again, I think also be prepared to discuss the pluses and minuses, meaning if it's going to cut down on some other truck groups out, because, but you have one coming in, then maybe it's a wash. I, you know, that's going to be for you to tell us, but it sounded like from what you were just saying, it's possible that some of the trucks you had going out to Lawrence now don't need to go to Lawrence anymore.
Absolutely.
So if one truck's coming in, but two don't go out, it's a net gain, at least theoretically. So I mean, that, that's going to matter, I think, to members of the board, for, you know, abutters. I mean, again, you know, fighting with an eighteen-wheeler coming out or in on that road, if there's one less of them, then that's all the better. So, but that's it for me. Again, this is administrative, so this isn't a public hearing, so we don't deal with the audience comments for this. So those are our thoughts at this point, but that's...
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
So just, you probably need clarification, just, it's not an official project yet, therefore we don't open it up to the public to comment on? It's just an administrative request by the potential petitioner, just to get the board's feedback, all right?
I will be available outside, and I certainly will try to meet with the neighbors before Gene is ready to...
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item B five, which is Concept Plan 135 Pleasant Street Elementary School.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, not a lot.
Well, I just think we need something...
Essentially, you're saying the first building first. Is that the only way guarantee it's done?
It's a very un sturdy building. I mean, it might be a better, I mean, being stronger.
Yeah, I'll send you an email.
Easier to log there.
Yeah.
Have them picked up. Look at this.
All right, if you'd all state your names for the record, the floor will be yours. Do we, are we having a problem with, or are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay.
Just going to...
All right, the floor is yours, you just state your names for the record, and then...
Sir, good evening. Peter Collins, the owner's project manager, C B R E, here.
Daniel Norman, landscape architect on the project.
Bill Beatrice, Flansburgh Architects, architects on the project.
Hi, Bill Maher, from Mitch Engineering, the civil consultant.
Where's yours, Joe?
Well, just first and foremost, I do apologize.
Bring that, just bring it right over. There you go.
I do apologize to the board. I have to leave at eight fifteen. I've got to do some flow tests up in Gloucester.
So should he go first?
Yeah, if we could do that.
Sure. If you have a portion that you need to present, you might as well go ahead and go first.
Go ahead, that'd be great.
And if you're going to go up today, just take the...
So what I'm basically going to talk to us about are utilities and some permitting. But it's underway right now. Currently, we are before the Conservation Commission for INRAG, which is an abbreviated notice of resources for the project. We have the wetlands flagged out last, last summer, and we are in the process of having those wetland flags that were delineated by L E C Environmental confirmed by the Conservation Commission. We have a sidewalk on Friday with the Conservation Commission's peer reviewer. There are a couple of changes with a few of the flags, so we're modifying the plans and hope to get those plans back to the commission tomorrow for Wednesday night's meeting. As star as utilities, we will, currently, the Ryan School is fed with water coming off of Pleasant Street. Our intent is to run a loop made to the site from the end of the Ryan School where now it ends, connect the fieldhouse, the new school for fire and aggressive water services, and then connect into the existing main in Monroe Circle. The same, you know, process will also occur for sewer. Our intent is to collect the sewer falls from the site and from the fieldhouse and from the school, and run it through the site and then connect to the existing sewer main out in Monroe Circle as well. We are looking at our drainage systems. We have a number of on-site subsurface infiltration systems, which are basically below-grade infiltration phases that collect the water and recharge into groundwater. We have a meeting last week with Kevin Hardeman, the town engineer, on Thursday, and right now, we are planning, hopefully with good weather, next Monday, to do some soil testing all around the site to confirm the soil types, the soils, and the estimated seasonal high groundwater at each location where we have proposed systems, which are most likely going to be in parking lot areas. We've got a square up here over in the far northwest or southwest area of the site where we're putting a field and a parking lot. We've got a couple of systems proposed because of what we've got in here for disturbance. The plan also involves the demolition of the existing school administration building, which fronts along Pleasant Street. We're going to demolish that and convert that into a parking lot with a bus queuing loop around the front of the site on Pleasant Street to, for all of the school buses, you know, for the site. We are increasing the parking spaces, the number of parking spaces on the site to accommodate not only the Ryan School, but the new elementary school as well for, obviously not for students, but mostly for faculty and for parents and for other staff members between the two schools. We are constructing a field for the site here with bleachers and the fieldhouse, which will also have a concession stand on the limits. And what is proposed in that field is a, to handle the runoff from that is a J drain-type system that will collect that water below the surface, and we will collect it with a drain that will ultimately discharge into the wetlands to the west of the site, towards I don't want to take away from what other people are talking about or plan to talk about, so...
Maybe Dan, you might want to run through a little bit more of the site concept.
Just to add a little to what Bill had been saying, we have two, excuse me, curb cuts on Pleasant Street. Cars will be entering on the southern one, buses will be entering there as well. We have queuing for sixteen buses. Parent drop-off will go car-to-clockwise around the site. There's a number of shared spaces that both the schools will be sharing. Parent drop-off being one in this area. The bus drop-off being here. A playground for the students to accommodate both schools, as well as a central quad area where there'll be an outdoor classroom. As Bill had mentioned, we've got a football field in Stadium CP 1500, the fieldhouse off-site, or, sorry, satellite parking for additional spectators. There's an existing infernal pool on the site that will remain and be protected, and loading dock to the north, a minimum of fifteen-foot buffer for the residents to the north and east with planting as well as board fence. Additionally, there's some fan parking or drop-off for ADA. I'm not sure if there's much more to add to that.
We have, before I walk through the floor plan, so we have had several neighborhood meetings, meeting with your abutters to hear out their concerns, and this site plan has reflected a lot of that. We've maintained a vegetated buffer on these two sides of the site to help screen from the neighborhood, from the residences, residences. There was some concern about the proximity of the football field. At one point, it was up closer to this property line, and we were able to push it down to get it away from the neighbors. So it's been a pretty open process, working with Peter, Peter Collins from here in International. So we've been kind of progressing along for many months. I'd like to walk everybody quickly through the floor plan, just so you have a sense of the actual building in addition to the site. So on the first floor, there's the administration wing in the corner for the school district office. These are the offices that are going to get displaced by the existing center school that's demolished, that gets demolished. The big space of the cafeteria and outdoor classroom is also located on the first floor. And these two wings house the classrooms and the sped classrooms. And then as you move up to the second floor, the gymnasium is located on the second floor along with the media center and classroom wing. And then very quickly to the third floor, there's two main classroom wings that form the third floor. So that's a quick rundown of the site and the floor plan and the building itself and the floor plan. So Peter, maybe you want to just talk quickly about the schedule? Are we in the process?
Certainly, thank you. Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm sure you're all well aware of what the project is. It's the, it's an elementary school, a new elementary school proposed on 135 Pleasant Street as a grade consolidation for the district, district-wide grades two, three, and four, as the design team has mentioned this evening. We've been, we've been underway for almost two years now, if not thirty months, with respect to getting schematic designs underway and getting state approvals and things of that nature. There've been many meetings with the, with the abutters. We've also had community meetings as a whole, not just the recent abutters. We've also had multiple meetings with town agencies and town departments. So the majority of the town agencies, or all of them, I should say, are well aware of the project, as are the abutters and the community as a whole. In terms of the schedule and the scope of work, it's pretty much was just defined by the design team members here this evening. We are, we are underway with design. We'll probably be completing the design in March of 2020. We do have a construction manager, Consigli Construction, will be acting as the construction manager, and they're assisting the project also with us. The majority of the bids will probably be going out in March of 2020. Construction will probably start in May, June of 2020. It's an estimated twenty-four-month construction timeframe, anticipating being substantially complete with the building in May, June of 2022, preparing the building for occupancy for the academic school year 2022, 2023. Depending how things go in the phasing and the progress, we may be able to complete the project by way of tearing down or removing the former center school once we complete the building and relocate the school department. If that happens, we could complete the project by performing demolition to the center school in the summer of 2022, in the fall of 2022, and wrapping up paving and final landscaping during the growing season by October, November of 2022. If that does not work out, we would come back in the spring of 2023 and do the final landscaping. It's pretty much the snapshot of how the schedule would unfold. We are going to continue to have design meetings throughout the course of the next six months, certainly with the building committee, certainly with town agencies, and certainly continue to meet with the abutters and the community as a whole to make sure all the project needs and requirements are fulfilled.
Just in terms of, just from a finish standpoint, is the field built at the same time or after, date-wise?
We are currently underway with communications with the athletic department. The construction manager, Consigli, and the design team, we're preparing for potentially, and it should work out, an early release package of just the site work. The fire, excuse me, the athletic field will probably be decommissioned at the end of the football season, and the fieldhouse decommissioned probably January first of 2020. That would allow construction activities to mobilize to the site, set up the parameters, the fencing, and then begin some early site work for the new athletic field with the goal of turning the athletic field over, having it ready in September of 2020 for the upcoming football season. While it is an athletic field, the first sports or athletics that will be played on it is scheduled to be football in twenty, in September of 2020. So we're looking at about a nine-month window to construct that athletic field. So we're looking at about a nine-month window to construct that athletic field. So there will be phasing, there will be site logistics, there will be joint use and occupancy of the campus, and we're currently underway with arranging all those logistics with the school department and in particular the Ryan School and the operations of the Ryan School.
Do you guys have anything else?
No, I think I think that's it.
I'll start with Mr. Delaney.
I'm going to bring up the same question you guys said I bring up every time I look at this. We have a problem down on Pleasant Street with people dropping off and picking up the kids. You've got this loop that goes around the school. What guarantees you that those people will drive in there and not drop their kids off and cause traffic on Pleasant Street? I know there you've got a great big loop, it'll fit all the cars, but who's to say that the people that are dropping their kids off at their school are going to drop them off in that loop?
Okay.
They want to know if, is there anything to prevent the parents from dropping them off on Pleasant Street and causing the same situation that we have now?
I'm not doing that now.
Well, the loop, they need to get dropped off here at this this portion here, and this loop is one-way only. So you can only, so they're forced to come off Pleasant Street and loop around the entire site to get here, you know? So, I mean, I doubt if you're, what you're saying is people are going to drop them off right here, for kids to walk into the into the site. I mean, that is...
That's what they're doing.
That's what they do now. They drop them off out on the street and let them walk in?
Well, I mean, certainly...
I'm asking is there a way that's going to force those people to bring their kids around that loop?
I think it's a policy with the school department at that point. I mean, this this building is pretty far off. I mean, as a, I'm a parent, and if my child, if I was dropping my child off at this at this school here, there's no way I would drop my my third or fourth grader here.
Sir, sir, you can't yell stuff from the audience.
I mean, that's, I'm just, as I was saying, you know, this is, if my second or third grader was going to the school, I can't envision myself personally dropping off at Pleasant Street and have them walk and wind in as these cars are coming out. Again, I think it's a policy issue with the school, and maybe it's a learning curve once the the new complex is complete. But the but the design is predicated on having this large loop around the site in order to get those cars off Pleasant Street.
I understand, and the thing is, with the school, the Ryan School, we we didn't realize how many pickups and drop-offs we were going to have. Now, we've surveyed this thing on and on and on, that that loop is going to carry the the kids over to drop-off points. But the situation that you have now is people are dropping their kids off on Pleasant Street, and they're walking into the school. Is the same thing, or is there something to make sure that they're going to use this loop? That's the question I'm asking. I've been asking it five, six times, the same question. Nobody is guaranteeing us that the cars on Pleasant Street are going to go down that loop and drop these people off.
Mr. Delaney, Mr. Ryan sits on the committee. You wanted to say, I don't know what...
Yeah, and and this is something that, you know, when I went on the committee, is Pete can attest to, I was adamant about traffic flow. We did traffic counts. We also talked with the superintendent of the schools about the program that needs to be implemented once this school goes online. So that is an internal policy. Also, it's been discussed with the police chief about how we're going to address traffic on Pleasant Street as well as the traffic, current traffic with the Ryan School. Currently, what you have right now is you have people entering at two, in and out, out of that single location. So what happens there is there's a backup, kids just get out on Pleasant Street. The intent of the queuing around the entire parking lot with the one-way loop will mitigate that, as well as the policy that's put in place with the teachers that are going to be handling bus drop-off and student pickup and drop-off in the morning is, and the staggered drop-off times. All of this has been discussed over and over, and I think this will get into that as we get into the full permit when it comes in front of the board. And like I said, this was one component that I was adamant about, and we did specific traffic counts, as well as we eliminated some of summer streets, cut-throughs to eliminate that bottlenecking there. I think this, the plan handles that. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney, you still want, you have anything else?
Yeah, well...
Just pull your mic over, because I think I got pushed away.
I know what everybody is telling me, on and on, that this loop, and you're going to have people out there, but you're going to take a day that it's cold or whatever, the teacher's going to stand out there and make sure these kids come in? They have to drive through?
They currently do that at the North Street. There is, currently, they do this at the North Street School. So that program is going to be...
I'm not going to ask again.
It's going to be transmitted over to the new school. And we've talked to the superintendent about this. They said this whole policy and what the program for the two schools are going to be implemented. So yes, we understand there's, as the committee understands what it entails, oh, my apologies, what the committee understands what the concerns that are residents there are, and the police chief was concerned about this as well. And I think the program will work.
Well, as long as we have people out there with machine guns to make sure that these cars go through the goddamn parking lot, excuse my language, but I just, I see when cars are driving in, I see people stopping on Pleasant Street. That's what I see. And the thing is, I've even seen people at the Ryan School holding up a sign that the school is closed today, so the parents don't just keep dropping their kids off. So the thing is, when you're telling me they're going to monitor this, we made a mistake with the Ryan School. We're spending $100 million right now for the new school. The new school has got to fix the problem of the old school. And if you're telling me it's going to work, and these people here are telling me it's going to work, I'll believe it. But boy, I'll tell you what, I want to see it. And I want to see the people that are going to make sure that these cars go through the loop and do what they're supposed to do. I'm all done. Thank you.
Delaney, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Glad we had all this fun early. Peter?
Yes, sir.
I've known Peter for a long time. He's been on a lot of construction projects for the town of Pittsburgh, and I think I can call you Peter, and I find Peter to be a gentleman, and I appreciate your staff coming here, although they've left you.
Well, one had to go for another appointment, but thank you.
That's good, that's good. But I can say for a fact that what Mr. Collins says, he does. Right down to the final, right down to the town hall, one, I mean, there were things in there that I, I came in, I was a pain, pain in the neck a couple of times, and he straightened it out. But I don't disagree, I don't disagree with Mr. Delaney's assertions about the parents. The kid's not the problem, it's the parents that are the problem when they're dropping the kids off. And to be honest with you, I've never seen anybody dropped off on Pleasant Street, but I've seen them drive in, there'll be 12 cars on Pleasant Street because they can't get in. There are buses, you know, that will take your kid to and from the school, but I think they used to call them the loser cruiser, and they probably still do. But we're talking about elementary kids. They're not high school kids, they're not junior high kids. So there's the children that should be secure in the means that they get to and from, directed when they get there. And I, from my viewpoint, I've seen that for years. I hope, and I can see that the fault of the Ryan School, to no fault of our own, some things that were supposed to have been done, not by the, but the town decided not to. So I guess we're going to have to make sure that what you see here is what we're going to get. And I appreciate that, having someone like Peter here as directing us along.
If I could add, as Mr. Ryan has said, he's he's very accurate in the description of the traffic flow patterns and the traffic studies that were done to enhance and get a full count of what the conditions are out there at multiple points throughout the day during the school year. And there were many, many conversations with the with the town engineer, the DPW, the police department, the fire department, the traffic engineers, the design team as a whole, and we definitely feel this solution will resolve the issues that are currently underway or being, rather, happening along along Pleasant Street with the Ryan School drop-off, which is a very short drop-off. It's a, it's a very short U-turn. You probably only can stage maybe a dozen cars, maybe 15 cars. That will not be the case when this project is finalized.
And one final thing, I like your timing. It seems like you're fitting everything in between your window of opportunity.
With respect to the schedule?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, we've had conversations at length with the school department and the athletic department and the community as a whole about the timing of certain aspects of the project. And we have a construction manager on the project, which is a nice alternative, which is a construction manager at risk delivery, which essentially partners with the project team members, and we're able to work logistically on issues such as the multiple phases that will happen, the occupancy of the campus to provide safety on the campus at all times for students, staff, the community, the contractors as a whole, and the separation of construction activities, so we don't impede or harm the, or neglect the educational environment that's underway at the Ryan School. The Ryan School is not going to be touched at all as far as the building goes. We'll just be cleaning up and reorganizing some of the site features, as we described this evening, with respect to storm drainage, sidewalks, access roads, some landscaping improvements and so on. So again, there's been a lot of thought. It's still a very dynamic project, so we're always, we're still in motion, we're still putting parts and pieces together, but we feel we got a pretty good handle on how it's going to come together at this time.
Good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fatai.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can echo Mr. Delaney's concerns, and I just have to believe that the drop-off plan you have in place will work. I've seen the the plan, and you guys, I've been to some community meetings, and, you know, I don't have children that age, but I've seen the backup on Pleasant Street, but I have to believe that this will work. So my opinion, hopefully you prove me right. So the plans look amazing. I've been to a number of the community meetings you've had, and do you have, are there any changes that you've put in place since then?
Maybe some minor, maybe Bill could speak on this, but nothing, no major changes, some minor adjustments.
Fieldhouse was moved and all that stuff, so, I mean...
Nothing since the May meetings, it's correct.
And I know some of the issues were stormwater issues. I don't know if you've got to that point yet, but I'm hoping you'll address all those in the future.
We would, I'm sorry, go ahead. We will, and we are, we are in the permitting phase at this point of the project. We have met with conservation once, we plan to meet again this week, and then we have to go on for the notice of intent, and then, of course, back to the planning board and the other permitting that's required. But yes, again, as Bill and the other Bill mentioned from niche engineering, town engineer has been involved with test pits with respect to storm drainage calculations and things of that nature are being well-vetted and filtered out.
Great, great. Thanks for your hard work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, can you, would you mind holding on for one second?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Delaney, you had a question or...
Well, the question is, the loop that goes around, can two cars pass?
Yes.
On the loop? Okay, because I'm worried about the mother that's late for work dropping her kid off.
It's a double-lane road.
Okay. For some reason or other, our schools seem to be the place where they want, some parents want to use them as babysitters. And if they're late for work, God forbid, you know, they they could drop their kid off anywhere, so as they get to work on time. That's, that's the thing, you know? And that's the reason why I'm concerned about Pleasant Street as well. You know, I, I'm for the school, I voted for the school, I voted for everything you guys are going to put in there. But I just want to make sure that, as I was dropping my grandchildren off and I couldn't get off, I couldn't even get into the school to pick them up or drop them off, I had to pick them up on Pleasant Street. So I was part of the problem too, and I'm willing to recognize that. That's why I'm so adamant about this system work.
It is, it is a two-lane road, and Dan, maybe you can speak to this. I mean, being that it's 24 feet wide, but it's meant to be one direction. The width is what's required by conversations with the fire department, you know, as cars are in there, they want the ability in a case of an emergency to go there. So the the intent is not that that's a two-lane...
Passing lane.
Passing lane, exactly.
No, I, I, again, I'll iterate the fact, I appreciate the work that's been done. I know we've overseen it and overseen it a million times, but the thing is, that's my one concern. And we got one chance to fix it. We're spending a lot of money, we got one chance to fix it, and I'd like to make sure that it's fixed. That's all. That's my question. Thank you for your time, yeah.
Mr. Ryan.
Thank you. I've seen this plan sometimes, I think I see it in my sleep sometimes, but, you know, I echoed, you know, what this board was going to say at the meetings, sitting as the member of the planning board on the elementary school board, and that was part of my role there also as a parent who has a child at the Ryan right now and had children go through that. So understanding what you deal with in dropping off, but my kids do take the bus, and I don't think they call that anymore. They enjoy that. But no, I will say, there was a lot of hard work that went into, a lot of changes, and, you know, to reiterate, the meetings, community meetings, as well as meeting with the neighbors, the town manager still meets with the neighbors regularly, and will continue to do so through the project. And as Peter stated, there's always room to change something. So as we continue along this project, if we find something that can be better, and that the CM at risk helps that, as we see something that can be better, we have the opportunity to make it better. So I think that's a positive way to look at the project. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All right. Before I start, again, Mr. Ryan's comments, I think that's why it was so important for us to make sure we got a representative on this building committee, so that we would have some of those things addressed when you were talking about it as opposed to waiting till you got here. I think that's very important. I think anytime we have this kind of thing, we, this board has to have somebody there. I've worked for the high school building, you know, and I think obviously it's helped here to make sure those things are brought up when everybody's in the room and not when you come in here and then five of us are yelling at you. It's not very productive. So I guess one thing I'll say is, it's, I guess it's, to me, it seems it's very lucky that unlike the high school, this isn't something we have to knock, you know, build a building, knock down a building all in order to get into the same space, which I think is, you know, allows for the timeframe that you're working with to be able to be done, which the high school had a little bit of a different setup because of that. Although you made the comment, I'm not sure which one you made it, but about the landscaping. I, when I came on the board, we were at the tail end of the high school. But what was clear was how much time had been spent by the board on the buffering and all that stuff, because I can remember going out, one of the very first things I did was walking along the whole outer ring of the high school where all that buffering and stuff had been put in, and, you know, listening to some of the board members who had been part of that discussion, but how important that was to the neighbors and how important it was to the board that those, is that really necessary? Don't do that again. Don't do it again. Listen to me. Listen to me. Don't do it again, it's rude. We'll not sit here and have you flashing me the bird because you don't like something you heard. Do you understand? I'll ask you to leave if you do it again. You've been barking out in the audience, I asked you to stop. That didn't mean to go silent and start flashing the bird up here at the board. Am I clear?
Yes, sir.
Back to what I was saying, it's going to be important here too, because again, we're in a pretty condensed space here, you know, the buffering's going to matter, and it's going to be something that everybody's going to want to make sure is done to the utmost that it can be.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, full agreement, while the landscape architect and designers are here and they have plans on anticipated locations for plantings, prior to the planting, there will be staking out of... locations for plantings, prior to the planting, there will be staking out of those plans to make sure that it does meet the needs, and if we need to add more, as Mr. Reiter says...
I was a little concerned when someone had said, you know, maintaining, because there is no green there to maintain right now. I mean, I've been to enough football games sweltering while I'm standing there. There's like a couple of trees and that's it. It's going to take more than that.
Sure.
You know, so that's, that's fine. And this isn't really a question. This is more of a confirmation. The football field that's going in will now be further away than the current football field is to the side of the property, correct? I mean, just looking at the two, the football field as it currently is, is closer to the edge of the property line towards the neighborhood than the new one is going to be.
That's correct. It's pulled way into the site now.
Correct. I know everyone's going to want to reinvent the wheel, but I will make one comment about the drop off here with the bus pod. Has anybody noticed exactly how far, I believe it's third and fourth graders, right?
Correct.
Are they going to have to walk from those buses before they get to their school?
Yes.
Rain, snow, New England. It's a bit of a hike with no cover between where they get off and where they have to get to. It's a bit of a distance. And again, I don't want to, I just wonder if there isn't anything that there may or may not be that can be done about maybe breaking up that rather long distance for when they might have to, for a huge chunk of the school year, be in inclement weather. You know, it just seems like, it seems like a bit of a long way for the youngest of the two groups that are going to be at this site to have to travel from those buses. I don't, I don't, again, my kids, by May, my last one's done, so none of them are making that walk.
Be a run out of raincoats.
Yeah. Like I said, it's just, they're the youngest ones, and I just wonder about that distance with no cover between them and where they're trying to get to, beginning of the day, end of the day, you know? I don't want everybody going into school soaked and then spending six hours drenched because of the walk from the bus to the, you know? But again, the, maybe I should already know, but what is the field being made out of? Is it turf or grass?
Settled turf.
Okay. I'm glad, because I prefer that, because it feels like the upkeep for that is going to be better than trying to do the grass, but I didn't know if the preference was one way or the other. And I presume, although I can't, I don't know, I assume there are speed bumps or some sort of prevention from this becoming...
That's correct. Yeah, there are a number of speed tables along the...
A raceway going around for someone who thinks they're late for work and would like to get out of there as quickly as possible. So that's good. You know, I understood Mr. Delaney's point, I mean, we definitely don't want people out on Pleasant Street, although, you know, to some degree, the school only has so much control over people who are doing something, if they're doing it illegally by simply stopping out on Pleasant Street. There's only so much that can be done. I think that is where it would be important for the, you know, the police department to...
Speaking of football.
I know. I'm doing the best we can. You know, making sure that, you know, that people are not doing that comes down to also the police department making sure that, you know, if they need to be out there, that there's somebody out there backing up the teachers who might be saying, move it along if someone really did try to do what's described. One would hope with this setup that would be discouraged because I'm not really sure what your benefit would be to doing it. Maybe the Ryan School students, I suppose, would be the ones who would do that, not the elementary, but, you know, I think that will be important. We've got to get people trained to go run the loop to make sure that that works. But other than that, in concept, it's, you know, it's impressive.
It is.
So, you know, once it's built and everything's in, I think people will be pretty happy with what we end up with, you know, for the full project. So, anything else from anyone?
One second.
All right. With that, you guys move on to your next portion.
Thank you very much. And we do appreciate Mr. Reiter being on the building committee. It's been a great asset to assist us.
We appreciate him being on there for us. Moving on to agenda item B6, concept plan, 325 Marshall Street. Do you need a break? No, no, that's fine.
I'm good.
Good to keep going? Nobody needs a break, right?
But you can bring them all up.
We'll just keep going.
It's a given.
It's a gamble.
You know what? He didn't stop shaking his head the whole day he was here.
It was true.
You like that, huh?
Yeah, I liked the look. You could tell.
Gentlemen, once you get squared away, just give these names for the record and the floor will be yours.
I'd like to know who he is.
Gentlemen? Mark Ginsburg, oh, sorry. Mark Ginsburg applicant.
You got to use it because we don't have the secretary.
Did you go with them, design?
Jim Hanley, civil design.
Ani Martel.
Hey, floor is yours, gentlemen.
All right, great. So we're in front of you today for 325 Marshall Street. It's just a concept review. Basically, we've been working on the design and the survey for a couple of months now. And before we get too far into it, we want to give you kind of the initial presentation. So open space residential subdivision, 325 Marshall Street, Mark Ginsburg and Ani Martel. I'm going to walk up here and point something out. Where's the site located? So main street is up in here, whipple is down here, we're about halfway between the street, and the lot is located on the west side of Marshall Street. It's about 55 acres in area, and we have about 18, 19, 20 acres of wetland on the site. You probably can envision the high tension tower lines that go down basically the right-hand or easterly side of the property line. Zoned R40, slopes are very gentle up there, very moderate. Done test pits the last couple of weeks, we had ground out over two to four feet of grade. For the most part, it's predominantly clear. That's why we wanted to kind of furrow this thing on top of the ortho photo so you can get a sense for kind of the limits of the proposed lots. It's actually located in the existing field that's out there right now. So that's where we're trying to kind of centralize all of the elements to the area that's already kind of been disturbed. So again, OSR date, we did a special project from you guys, as well as the defendant subdivision, in an order of condition for conservation. So 55 acres, when we do the math on the density calculation, it comes out to 39 lots. So you can see our lots here are basically around this ring road. We have 3,200 plus minus feet of roadway, and there's an existing house that is part of this property that is going to remain. There's going to be four or five acres associated with that piece. And then there's two existing houses that actually front off of what's considered an access easement, which is basically a roadway. If you looked out there, it looked like a roadway. It's 24 feet wide and provides access to these two existing butters as well as the existing house that's up there now. So each of the lots will be about 1,500, 15,000 square feet in area, somewhere about 100 feet of frontage. All be about four bedrooms, 2,800 square feet. We're going to have about 25 acres of upland around the entire perimeter of the property. So the upland portion is obviously what will be developed in here. 3,200 feet of roadway and 24 feet wide. And we're also looking at right now providing a five-foot wide sidewalk along the corner as well in, you know, to Marshall Street. There's an existing wetland crossing located in this area right here. We're still in the process of doing design. We've had everything flagged. We have everything located. We have the boundary line done. We're kind of going through the analysis as what is going to provide the least amount of impact to existing wetlands that's out there right now. So I guess where do we stand? Where we stand right now is that we went to the local housing partnership last week. We did basically this presentation with them. We have our survey done. We're in the middle of our design effort. We think over the next maybe six weeks, give or take, we'll have a, we'll have the design work essentially pretty much pieced together. We have an IDR scheduled, but I think the IDR is scheduled for later this month.
We already met once.
I'm sorry?
We already met once.
We already met once, right. So we've kind of developed an open dialogue with engineering as well as the IDR people who are trying to keep them involved in what we're doing. So that's kind of the development. So there's a couple of things we kind of want to talk a little bit about. One of the reasons we went to the, to the housing, local housing partnership was the impact of the affordable, right? We've been here in front of you, and we've had a challenge specifically with the, with the residential subdivisions, difficulty into trying to integrate affordable units into the, into the subdivision style as opposed to the townhouse style. We had a pretty good conversation with the partnership. That's something we'd also like to kind of talk on a concept basis with you guys tonight.
Anything else on that?
The only thing is that what Jim mentioned, we already had one IDR. What the applicants want to do is they want to go through a process of multiple IDRs so that when we submit the final plans, we should be like 90, 95% all cleared away with all the departments. And that way, when we come to the public hearing process, it'll be quicker and it'll be easier to understand because hopefully have all the sewage, drainage, fire protection, police and all of those issues already cleared up as opposed to when we normally bring it in and then it extends it out six or eight weeks. So that's what our intent is. So if I already met with them once, we'll probably be with them at least two more times.
Let's make sure that when we come in with the formal that you mentioned exactly how many times that was, because I can already envision the, you know, why did this happen so fast? Well, because it was all done previously. Let's make sure we discuss that, and, you know, I doubt I'll forget, but if I do, please remind me, because not everybody does it that way. You know, if a lot of those things are taken care of in advance, it's one of the reasons why we don't have to spend a lot of time sending people back out for weeks on weeks. So make sure we discuss that when, if and when you bring in a formal plan. We'll start with Mr. Reiter.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, I think the development, you know, from what you've shown, I think obviously I've seen some of your work, I think it'll be a nice development. I like the fact that you're going to go with the 24-foot wide road, the five-foot sidewalks, obviously. My only, my only concern obviously was the letter from the partnership, understanding it's difficult to create affordable within a development like this, but, you know, we already have $3 million sitting in account, not doing much for us right now, and our numbers are just going to get worse. So from my perspective, I'd like you to work on a way of incorporating that into the project. I think, I mean, I think it can be done, but I'll leave that up to you guys and your architects and engineers and designers to try and come up with something. And I understand where, and believe me, I understand where you're...
It's time for me to add, 2500 square foot home, and you try to sprinkle in these four, you know, 1200 square foot homes there. You don't want to create the haves and have nots.
Yep.
So it's not so much for us, our financial thing there, because whether we give the talent money there or we build units, it's the same cost for us there. And we want to help with affordable housing there, but in this particular case, it seems like it's a tough fit to get those type of houses in with the larger homes.
No, I absolutely understand, and I think that's where we have to look at being creative, whether we look at other parcels that we can, that's, that you can develop that possibly offset that. I've seen that done before and obviously working with the housing partnership, but I think if we can obviously work with them and, the tough thing is, as a municipality in the housing partnership, we're not builders, or they're not builders. They really need to partner with somebody. And partnering with a developer, that's one way of doing it. And I've talked about this before, getting creative. You know, at some point, we have to get creative. Developers have to get creative, the board has to get creative, the partnership has to get creative, and sitting down and trying to come up with a plan to meet our needs but also not impact the development. Is there ways of looking at, you know, in the early section of the development, putting those smaller affordable homes in and tucking the ones in the back? Obviously, I know it's difficult with a 3,000 square foot house versus a 1,200 square, 1,500 square foot house, but you already have a couple of 1,800, 1,900 square foot homes entering into the parcel. Could you carve out a couple and get those in that lot and make it work? I think it's worth looking at.
And we did look at that several times, actually, but we went in front of the housing though. They did have some ideas for that money though. So I think we're looking at some town lots and other areas, plenty of them too, maybe Mr. Fattah could talk more on that, but there are other areas that can use that money for us. So it wasn't like it was a money sitting on the council. I think it's going to be going towards something down the road. But we did look at the property in length about how can we break that apart. But you can see the way it is, because of the way the wetlands are, once you're in there, in there. And we don't, we don't want to create the, once again, the, you know, the haves and the have nots. You come in there, here's the, you know, the affordable units and you enter, you know, the $700,000 home here. So unfortunately, 40B, the way it is, all the town, local, you know, initiative here to require a 10% component in the residential subdivisions is a tough fit. I know we want the 10%, that's our goal, 10%, they didn't give affordable housing, but in this particular, you know, development there, and once again, it's not about us trying to circumvent any type of, you know, if the board wants houses, we're going to put houses in there, and that's what we went in front of the housing approach. We've never been in front of housing for any type of subdivision in the past. So it's not about, you know, equity and money, it's just about what's right when we're done. You guys are the planning board, you're planners, so you've got to say, is that the right fit for this type of housing? We don't want to create an environment where neighbors are pitted against each other because of size homes they live in. So we don't want that, but yes, I want to open this forward in our local housing to see how can we make that money that you do have there go towards a better affordable housing environment. So we will do that, but we did look at this property in length on that, how can we fit them in there. So I just didn't look after them today. So that's why we went to the affordable housing, the local housing partnership to see just what their thoughts were there. And they threw a lot of things out there about, you know, once again, town land and different renovating other properties. In the past, they bought back. They spent $1,007,000 buying back the apartments over there, the 77 units there. So that money, that bought 1.7, I don't know what the number was, 1.7 million dollars, I think it was, they bought 77 units back there. So in these terms, you can take that way, it may sit for a while, but when it comes due, the money that it buys from you like that out again here. So I think we know going forward there, when you go to MFD, whether it be condos or apartments there, there's no question about there that the units should be in place. There'll be no buying them back there. So this gives a good balance of getting some cash in your coffers for affordable housing there. And knowing as us, as developers here, when we do MFD, whether it be apartments or condominiums there, we know we're going to be building units for that purpose there, so. But we did give it some thought, we'll continue to do that going forward there, but I can't guarantee that's the best fit for there. So hopefully take all that into consideration when we go forward with the project there that we want to put the best foot forward there, but in this environment, we're not sure that is the best, best development.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Fattah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being a member of the local housing partnership, I was at that meeting that Mr. Ginsburg and Mr. Martel and Mr. Hanley attended and gave a nice presentation as to what their plan was for this project. And, you know, I voted that night as well as the other members of the committee, which we have a letter here that stipulates that from Mrs. Reed, voted in favor of taking the fee in lieu of rather than putting the affordable component in this project for the number of reasons that Mr. Ginsburg just stated, that smaller homes in a larger development like that just don't fit. And I know for a fact that the money that we took, which is over $800,000 that they're going to propose to give to the town in fee of lieu of, is site specific only. It's not, not going to be in any other projects as well. It's just for this reason, this site only, that we accepted the fee in lieu of proposal. So, you know, being a member of the Tuxbury Habitat Build Group, I know that we don't spend $800,000 in developing four house lots in town. We've got some land from the town, and we've used it as, you know, as well as we could. And I know we've developed a number of units already, and I know that money would come in handy as far as developing town or land, which we're looking at right now. There's a couple of proposals for projects, the streets that have, that have become identified by us to possibly do some development for affordable housing purposes. Again, finding the right developer to help us do that is the biggest challenge, because there is no real money made in those affordable housing component units. It's strictly cost... It's strictly cost and so forth and so on. So that's our biggest challenge. Thank God we have the Shawshing Tech in there building the homes for us. We're doing the best we can as far as Tuchbury Habitat Build, securing funding, donations and so forth and so on to get our numbers up. So we have a unit that'll probably become on board by November on South Street, which is the completion of that project. Looking at ten units now maybe down on Main Street, again, by Tuchbury Habitat Build. So that money does come in handy and that's why I voted in favor of taking the fee in lieu of for this project rather than requesting those houses down on that project. So with that, I think the project looks great and I look forward to seeing it come in front of us again with new plans.
Mr. Delaney.
I kind of agree with Mr. Fatale. I think the project is, you know, pretty much well-designed for the area that they're going to put it in, along with the fact, the eight hundred thousand dollars, we're better off coming up with eight hundred thousand dollars than being able to use it for something like he wants or whatever. I don't know what happens to the funds once it gets into the housing, but, you know, and not only that, but to see who signed the letter, she wouldn't give her soul away unless there was a financial, you know, a financial thing involved. And for her to write the letter, you know, it gives me pleasure for these guys.
Mr. Delaney, you are full of color tonight, I got to say. There's pictures I'm getting from you this evening.
Well, the thing is, I think it's a great idea and I bought a steel wool. You know, the thing is, if you look at a group of houses and you're the guy that has to live next to the one that's smaller, your house doesn't become the worth that all the rest of them are, okay? It just doesn't work. And they're absolutely right in what they're saying because I wouldn't want to be the one living there. So I think the fee in lieu of and the project that they have is wonderful. I go with it.
Mr. Fau.
Geez, I can't say the same thing as everybody else.
It's tough, I gotta go laugh, so I mean, I'm stuck.
It's kind of amazing. Let me ramp this up from my perspective. I can't see anything on this that is a negative. Mr. Hanley and Mr. Kuko, I can't see anything on this that's a negative at all. So to me, it shows that OSID will work and I was sold in reading this letter when I read the third to last paragraph. That tells it all about the use of the funds. Third to last paragraph, you read that, understand that, I'm happy with it. That's it.
All right. So as far as the project itself, I mean, again, concept, we're looking at it just in, you know, our two D, no issue with the setup, I think it fits, you know, we've discussed like making sure the only ones, whichever ones are closest to the others, making sure that we deal with, you know, whatever is necessary for shielding and whatnot, that's obviously, you know, no different than any of the other projects that you've done similar to this. It's just the one thing that you got to make sure, you know, we do that. Obviously, you don't really have that issue on some of the sides, there really isn't anything.
Pretty much open space around all the problems.
That's what I mean, so whatever's the closest, as long as there's no issue, that's fine. In a more sort of abstract, you know, as far as the affordable housing, you know, this is sort of what I was trying to get at when we've had sort of, where we have the new zoning bylaw being discussed and a lot of people were pushing for the complete removal of the fee in lieu of, which I thought was short-sighted and wrong-thinking because it doesn't take into account when things like this come up where it just won't make sense. And there is a way to take the fee in lieu of and use it towards something that, you know, the town can use to deal with its affordable housing needs without forcing somebody to do, deal with it in an area where it's not going to make sense. Like you pointed out, in those apartment style or where everything looks the same, it's easy, build them. They look no different than the unit next door, the unit upstairs, the unit down the hall. It's all the same, so that makes sense. When you're looking at something like this, you're going to have outlier buildings built that look different than everything else, it doesn't make as much sense. That doesn't, that's not really the intent that we're looking for, but had we, if we gone the route of removing the fee in lieu of completely, that's what you'd be left with. You'd have a project like this in front of us and we'd have no choice, we'd be forced to ask to have the building, the units built, which to me makes no sense. So I think this process works better when we still have that option, when it makes sense.
When forty B came out fifty years ago, most of the homes were twelve hundred square feet, fifteen hundred square feet, ranches, colonials. So the intent was great back then, to blend in, but fast forward with the marketplace there, I believe, I would love to build homes, I started building homes back when they were a hundred thousand dollars a piece, so I wish I can go back to that, but the marketplace unfortunately dictates the size of the homes before you pay for the property and the construction costs here, so you just can't build those smaller, or maybe you could build them, I guess, but you lose money, but you can't build the smaller homes to meet in with the forty B. It hasn't kind of caught up with the laws and regulations there. And with the towns now, the towns never had this inclusionary affordable components that they do now. So when you do it and you start thinking about it, yeah, it makes more sense when you get to the MFD style, but when you get to similar filming homes, it's just, it's a hard blend at that point in time.
You're hitting on my other issue that, you know, the forty B comes about because of the requirement of such large lots as the standard and not having a way to build things that, you know, make more sense in terms of size. And so you get something like that forced upon you to deal with as a result of that.
The town should have an affordable overlay housing, affordable housing overlay district and give some, go in line with the forty B parameters, you know, but now instead of going to the forty B process, it's done locally. And if you market, if you do with the twenty-five percent, you know, component there, then the whole project will count towards the, towards the, towards your ten percent there. So I know you're going through your master zoning right now there, but I think you should think about doing some sort of, you know, affordable housing overlay to incentivize, you know.
There's at least two members of that committee sitting in the room. But again, as far as the project goes, I have no issue with, you know, taking the fee. I think this is actually not a bad process as well for those who, you know, who may want to come in and make the request that they think their project deserves to be considered to take the fee in lieu of instead of the building of the units is to go, you know, to go into the housing and have a conversation with them and say, you know what, do you have some things coming up where the fee could help you accomplish those goals? Because something like this makes it a little easier on us when we make that decision and we say, what is our basis for making this decision to accept the fee in lieu of? Well, here's one of those, one of those right here coming from, you know, a committee in the town that's dealing with that. So I think that that's, I think, you know, others would be well-served to try and do the same thing if they can, if that's their route they're going to try and go, because I think that's, it makes our job a little simpler, I guess would be the easiest way to put it. Beyond that, you know, again, you know, wait to see the official plan and, you know, the mockups and everything like that, but otherwise, I have no issue. I think your biggest thing you were asking for, and I'll take it, I guess I'll pull it this way, because I think this is why these meetings, the concept meetings are important because your big question was, would the board be inclined to be okay with the fee in lieu of as opposed to the units before you go through all the process of getting ready to go, come before us? So, Mr. Ryder.
I'm, you know, I'm going to look at it a little further also. I'm going to talk to Vinnie a little bit more and some members of the affordable housing to get an understanding what projects they have coming up and get some better ideas of where they came about with this, so.
Mr. Ryder, at the meeting, we discussed the idea of partnering up with some developers for the sole purpose of building affordable housing in town, you know, and it's a tough sell, but I think it works both ways, you know, so that we approached Mr. Ginsburg about advising us on some of the pluses and minuses of the developers' side of the coin as far as helping us develop town land. So we're looking at some town land now and I'm hoping with the money, if we do get this money and the money we have in the bank right now for that, that we'll be able to do that as well, you know. Again, it's a time issue and time, it takes time, it's not going to happen overnight, but we've got a great partnership with Shawshing Tech and they've done a great job down on South Street, so hopefully that can continue, so.
Okay, but for polling purposes, it's not no and it's not yes?
No, it's not yeah, I just, I will reserve do a little more research, but I know, I appreciate, you know, and I understand, I understand the market and, you know, I get it, but I do want a little more research on it.
Mr. Fau.
I have an easy answer.
Yes.
Mr. Delaney. I have the same easy answer.
Mr. Fatale.
Yes.
I'm all right with it as well for the way it's been presented here, so. You have a four okays and a no see.
I'm not opposed. I will say, I think, you know, as I stated, I mean, I'm not questioning your work by any means, you know, great projects, you know, I'm sure it will turn out to be another great development. Just my concern.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item B seven.
I feel anyone's here for these.
These two?
You just said to put thirteen ninety on the agenda.
I have, I have.
And then three ninety-five as well, because that as bill had come in and then we just recently had the vote in the town meeting about the easement, the drainage.
I'd say we lay this on the table tomorrow night.
But I'm not sure if anyone's here for it.
I don't see anyone. All right, so speaking to Anna.
But it's a score.
Is there, is there anyone here for thirteen ninety Main Street? No? Okay. Do any of the, do any of the members have any comments on it at this point? I mean, I see on the cover letter, we're anticipating a letter from Mr. Hardeman. I doubt we would do much more before we received that letter, so my guess is we'll just leave this on the administrative action and anticipating that letter. So that takes care of B seven. B eight, I believe, oh, we have the letter from Mr. Hardeman on this one. Is there anybody here for three ninety-five Woburn Street as-built review? No. Well, you know, since we have no one here for it.
Don't we have a letter from, from Cube Smart?
From who, I'm sorry?
Cube Smart.
That's from Mr. Hardeman.
Oh, was the one, was there something here tonight?
For thirty, three ninety-five.
Oh, okay. No, maybe it wasn't, that was something else.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, for three ninety-five Woburn Street, on my town planner's report, I had found out there that they recently told me last week that they replaced the dead trees and so I'm going to go this week and review that work.
Okay.
So that's the only outstanding item for, as a condition of the landscaping that I have for three ninety-five.
So would the members be fine with leaving this on for the next administrative as well? Depending on that.
Definitely, yeah.
Site review?
I want to ask Anna, did she realize when she took this position, she was going to be a part-time arborist?
That's okay, I like gardening.
All right, so with that, we move on to agenda item C, which is one twenty Lumber Lane. They've asked to be continued to our twelve sixteen meeting. Do I actually have one? I don't think for twelve sixteen, do I? Can I safely say seven?
Well, that four members.
Twelve sixteen.
It's way up, so way up.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to say unless, for some reason, there's somebody else on already that agenda, I will accept the motion to continue this to seven PM. Okay, so we have a motion made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That one continued. Moving on to agenda item D, which is twenty Deborah Drive. This is continued from our ten seven meeting. Do we have any, there we go. Did you state your name for the record? The floor is yours.
Joanne Bennett. I'm here to request a special permit to build a family suite to house my parents. My mom is seventy-nine, my father is eighty-five, and they currently live in Walden. My brother lives in Wilmington and it would be great to have them near us as they need a lot of care these days.
Very nice.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Delaney.
From what I can see, everything seems to be in order. The plans and so forth are done very nicely. I have no problem with this, I think.
All right.
Maybe we should approve.
Mr. Fau.
I'm all set.
Mr. Ryder.
I'm all set, as stated, we'd like to see this.
Mr. Fatale.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can't see a better idea than to house your parents at your house, you know, and take care of them and keep them close and tend to their daily needs on a regular basis. It's a great idea and glad we can help propose that and get that through the system and I guess my only question would be, is the house on sewer?
It's going to be.
Going to be?
It's going to be. It's currently on septic, so we have to switch.
Other than that, I'll leave the last comment to Mr. Johnson, who always comes up with that statement, but I'll let it go, but good luck.
I honestly thought we weren't going to get it that time. I really thought we were going to.
I was going to give it, I was going to give it a little bit.
I'm surprised you didn't.
Vinnie is always the one who does the sewer question for us and I just thought that maybe that was going to slip by, I was a little nervous, but.
Where's the mail bosh going to be?
How come you didn't make a relocate the mail?
As we said in the past, we're always in favor of these, as long as the paperwork is in order. Obviously, you have to deal with the building inspector to get the actual permits, it's up to them, we give you the ability to do it, they tell you whether you can actually do it or not. If everything works out the way it was presented to us, you should be fine, but that's again for the buildings inspector to.
He has looked at the.
Yeah, like I said, it's just, just because we say you can, there's still one more step and that's dealt with with the building department, so. Other than that, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments or concerns? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Do we should open?
Yeah, it says continue.
Well, this was the first time I was actually.
Why does it say continue?
We opened it and closed it.
We opened it.
Oh, you did.
We always open them, so we should have.
I just didn't hear it, so.
We opened it when you, when we had a canceling meeting.
We weren't here for the previous meeting, but we opened the hearing even though it was being continued.
Right.
Sorry.
No, that's all right, I'm glad you asked, because if I didn't, I'd have to go back and do it, so.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just one comment, you know it has to be under a thousand square feet. The plan shows nine eighty-nine, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, it can't be over.
Right.
Right.
All right, so we've established opening and closing. Now, what is the pleasure of the board as to the family suite special permit as?
Motion to approve the plan as submitted.
All right, so a motion to approve the family suite special permit, made, seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, twenty-four, nothing Patriots.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad I wasn't recording it with the hopes that no one told.
He was recording and hoping no one tells.
He didn't hear it, so.
I don't want to hear it. What's the score?
Nothing.
You don't know.
Twenty-four to nothing.
All right, we're getting off topic here, we'll never get off here. Moving on to agenda item E, ten thirty-seven North Street, fifteen forty-seven Andover Street at all, continued from our ten seven meeting. Do we have anyone do it for ten thirty-seven at all?
No, this is continued.
Oh, they want this continued, right?
Yep.
Yes, it's continued.
I'm sorry, so we're going to continue this till?
To the fourth and it will be at seven, seven-ten.
What's this one?
I don't know what to do.
Okay, I'll use yours, use yours is more accurate than mine. Yeah, Mike's a mess here. All right, so we're going to take this one and have it for seven-ten on November fourth. So I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, moving on to agenda item F, which is four thirty-four Main Street, Wamisette Lanes, continued from our ten seven meeting. This is our first actual discussion on this, right?
Yes, so needs to be opened.
I think we did open, I think we opened all of the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
You know, just to cover the bases, we're gonna, do we have a motion to waive the public reading?
I moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That was built and suspenders. All right, gentlemen, if you could just state your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Good evening. I'm Bill Hall with Civil Design Consultants.
I'm Don McLaren, owner of Wamisett Lanes. Dick Chico from Woodland Design, representing Wamisett Lanes.
Where's yours, gentlemen?
So we're here for you tonight for a modification to the site plan special permit, new special permit number 2014-13 for Wamisett Lanes located at 434 Main Street. I'll give you a quick rundown of the plan before you, before I get into some more discussion. So on this plan here, what we're looking at is a zoomed-in section of the rear of Wamisett Lanes. So this is the rear, which now a gravel parking area to the north. This is a railway bend back here, and then the front parking lot in Main Street is off the plan to the south. So this upper section shows our grading and drainage and utilities plan. This is the parking layout plan. So basically what this is, is they have gone and paved a portion of back here and done some gravel area, and we're coming in to seek a modification to allow that. What our proposal is, is to pave the entire area, or most of the area, I shouldn't say not the entire, gravel area, because currently there's a fence that runs down approximately eight feet off the property line, and it's approximately a foot off the property line to the north. So what we're proposing is pavement with some open space over here to allow for snow storage. And then up here, we're proposing pavement approximately four feet off of the property line and a continuation of a vinyl fence that will run down. This would create an additional 23 parking spots, and we've allowed for an area for a fire department truck to turn around back there so we could get access. And to treat the stormwater, the increase in stormwater, we have a hydrodynamic separator, so a storm sector unit that would treat it, and then this large infiltration bed to infiltrate it back into the ground to ensure no increase in feet runoff and volume.
The, I don't know if you mentioned though, but primarily, this is a employee, for employee parking, so there is a back entrance to the door, to the property over here in this...
Doesn't work.
Oh, anyways.
It's not like you to have one that works.
Well, it was working earlier this evening, anyway. So, right over here is, we have the employee entrance, and deliveries come around to the back area here, so by having the employee parking in the rear, it obviously opens up 20 more additional spaces out front to be used for our patrons. This, this area, when we had our IDI meeting, this area that was already paved was put in there as part of our original agreement with the fire department when we were first constructing the building, so... Sorry, Bill.
No problem. So we are requesting some waivers for this as well. So the first waiver that we're requesting is from Section 5170. That's to allow the paved surface to be within 10 feet of the lot line. The second waiver that we're requesting is from Section 5422, and that's to allow this paved parking area without any sidewalks, because as Dick had said, it's employee parking, and really a sidewalk wouldn't do any good along the rear property line there for anybody. We had requested a third waiver from Section 5424, because originally we were gonna leave the gravel. However, since we're paving it now, we rescind that waiver request. A fourth waiver is from Section 5427, and that's to allow a dead-end aisle in excess of five parking spaces. As I've stated, we've, we've designed a turnaround area that's sufficient for the fire department vehicles to turn around. Fifth waiver is from Section 5424, and that's to allow for a parking area without continuous curving. Due to the topography on the site, it's, it slopes away from the building, and then it rises back up as you approach a property line, so we're just maintaining that swale through that area to get our drainage to go to the catch basin and not cutting into the slope to do continuous curving there. Sixth waiver is from Section 5429. That's to allow a parking area without curb stop or a planting strip. As I've said, there's a small strip there and a vinyl fence, so we see the curb stops to be unnecessary in this situation. Seventh waiver that we had requested was from Section 5434 to allow snow storage on the gravel surface, but again, when we went to paved surface, we decided to remove that section of gravel. It'll now be loam and seed where the snow storage area is, so there's no longer a requirement for that. And the final waiver, waiver eight, is from Section 5440 for the planting area requirements. Again, we're proposing pavement within the landscape buffer. It's a very thin strip in there, and there's not much room for planting, so we'd request a waiver from that. We also received some comments from Ms. McGinty and from Mr. Hardeman, and we can discuss those. The first comment from Ms. McGinty's letter is the width of the interior driveway, so... So that would be this section right here. There's a fence and a guardrail that creates a pinch point in there. I went out and measured that earlier today, and it does meet the 20-foot requirement, and we will update the plan to reflect that.
Mr. Chairman, they had stated earlier that they had labeled it on the plan, yet it's not labeled, so I would like to see a revised plan that actually is labeling that, what the exact amount is.
Yep. And then regarding the loading area, that's an existing loading area that's back there. So we understand the bylaw, however, it's something that, it's existing, so it's, we're just proposing it's continued use. And then the remaining requirement, we could accommodate that just based on what the board would like to see, and I'll wait for your comments. And then the letter from Mr. Hardeman, the biggest comment here that we see is the first one. So what we have right now is, could I borrow... We have an existing sewer line that runs through back along that property line, and he has a concern with the infiltration in that area. We did test pits, and we, from what we observed, that sewer line is most likely underwater for most of the year. It certainly was when we went out there and did the test pits. And additionally, there's a sewer manhole that's in this wetland area. So we understand his concerns with infiltration and inflow, but we don't believe that that's something that we would have much, if any, impact on, given the circumstances on the site and the relatively small amount of water that we're putting into the ground compared to the depth that sewer is below groundwater already. And I believe that was the only remaining comment that we had from Mr. Hardeman. So that's all I have, and I love...
There's just one, yeah, just one other item that was brought up is that, originally, the sewer came through the property like this, and then we routed it around. We actually recorded a plan to show that easement relocation, but the written document never got followed up with the recorded plan, so Mr. McLaren has had his attorney draft up that language to dedicate to the easement and have the town release it, so that area, that will be taken care of in the next couple of days.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I know where this line is. I watched it when it was put in the main trunk. You're talking about the main trunk line, the sewer, main sewer trunk line?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Because still we're talking about the same thing.
Yes.
That was put in a wetlands. It's still a wetlands beyond Wamisett. And to say, I think it's kind of disingenuous when to say you have to watch and you might be responsible for any infiltration of water into our pipe. It's closing the door after the horse left. I would, I'm not gonna argue with Mr. Hardeman. He's the engineer, I'm not, but I know what's in the ground, and I know when it was put in the ground. And if there was a problem, they would have addressed it since then. There isn't a problem, and I can't see how they should say to a taxpaying business owner in this town who wants to put, do a little job in the back of her building that's been in, in five years?
Four years.
How?
Four years.
Four years. I gave you another one.
Made him a year old.
Yeah. I just can't see how, oh, we'll get him to do it if there's a problem. That's not what the responsibility of this board. Responsibility lies with the DPW. They should find out if there is an infiltration, where it's coming from. They make things that they can use to do that, and we all know what I'm talking about, be it dye or cameras or whatever, scuba diver. But anyways, I'm not being funny. I just, I find it, it is disingenuous, and it's not the makeup of this town or the board to go after someone that came in afterwards. So I like the project. I think it's, I wish you good luck with it, and let's move on. Thank you.
Mr. Ryder?
Thank you. I will agree with Mr. Fowler. I'm, you know, a bit concerned, I mean, do they have a, I mean, with his letter, I usually agree with Mr. Hardeman, and I know dealing with this is not an easy thing, but does he have a baseline? Have they already done any...
He hasn't indicated that to us.
So I, I think without a baseline of what's existing prior to what work you're doing, it's, it's hard for us, or me as a board member, to say we're ultimately making you responsible for an impact that we don't know what the impact already is, or increasing impact, if any. So I, that's one concern. The other concern I have is on the waiver, just a bit concerned about not having a curb stops with a vinyl fence, concerned about, I mean, one for, you know, where in New England, plowing, understanding, knowing where your edge is, if not, you're gonna be replacing that fence a lot more often. It's gonna get damaged, it's cold weather, cars gonna bump it, you'll be continuously breaking panels. I think at the, I think at the upfront cost of having the curb stops are gonna save you in the long run of replacing panels. I really do. I think it's gonna help in the making for that. Can you...
Curb stops, a bollard's one.
Either way, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest with you, I wanted to put something similar to what we have on the corner, like, almost like a guardrail, just to protect it against my building, because I've had three or four cars hit my building. And we've already replaced a couple sections of fence, even though we don't carry the fence all the way down yet. But it is, it is a concern, but like I said, I just wanted to make something simple that goes against it. That looks nice.
I, I agree. I think a bollard, and I think if you put that in, in the revised plan, when you, as Mrs. McGinty stated, put something in there, a standard bollard, that's gonna protect and save you...
My biggest concern is just as long as it looks...
I think also the concern with the bollard was in the location of the sewer line. If you look at where you would, you know, but I think, obviously, once you have your mark out...
Sewer's 20 feet deep.
I understand the concern, but...
Yeah, it was actually easier now that we, not having the gravel, that we're, so we stripe it. You know, we'll put something in there that... How about if you say, devices to protect the, so that way we can figure out...
Absolutely, sufficient. I'll leave that up to you and just put it back in the plan.
Thank you.
Other than that, I, you know, I think adding additional parking to relieve the overflow parking out front is fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
Yeah, I, well, I agree with my counterparts over here. You have to put something in to kind of protect the fence. You definitely do need a park, okay? And I can't think of a better way of correcting the problem, except by putting the parking spaces back. And it looks like they've addressed the situation with the water and so forth, and they can't be responsible for something that was put in, you know, years back or whatever the case could be. So unfollow what they want to do. Just protect the fence.
Mr. Fattaya?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did do a site visit to Wamisett Lanes on Sunday. I seen a number of cars in the back that were parked. The place was spotless, immaculate, clean, everything looked great, you know, and that's a sign of a, of a successful business, where you have, you know, overflow parking, and you're making a room in the back to accommodate some of the employees, to alleviate some of the parking concerns out front. I think it makes good business sense, and I'd like to stay, stay consistent with helping business people in the town and, rather than hinder them. So I'm all for, all in favor of doing the rear gravel, making it pavement, letting it work and do itself, like Mr. Ryder said, providing those bollards or something to prevent, you know, any accidents happening back there is, is great. I know there was a note here about some no parking signs possibly in the snow storage areas. Is that, can we accommodate that?
Yeah.
Just a couple, so...
Yep.
Other than that, I mean, I have no problems with, with what you want to do there, so all said. Thank you.
So you, do you have an issue with any of the, the three comments that the town planner suggested?
I don't believe so. Uh, no.
Okay, so the board members have no problem with that, right? If all three of those are incorporated?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Which comments are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I was talking about three, four, and five, yeah, just because that, the one Mr. Fattaya brought up.
And then can I just say, for comment number two, my concern is that with loading in the rear, that with employee parking in that rear too, that there'll be a traffic conflict? And so that was my concern about the loading in the rear. That employees coming in and out, and then loading happening there as well. So that, I think that was misunderstood by the applicant of what that comment purpose was.
Okay.
I mean, that isn't usually an issue, because the way, as you know, like on Monday and Tuesday,
we don't even open until four, except in the summer, so the delivery schedule and the employee schedule isn't always like you would normally expect. They don't get deliveries like all day long, so a lot of the employees don't get there. It's only half of the employees there early in the morning when we get the deliveries. Most of the employees start to come in in the afternoon, in the evenings, and on the weekends.
Even when I'm fully sure, at 10 o'clock, we require all our deliveries with tractor-trailers be on site by 9:00 AM. I'm not saying it's not an occasion, we run out of something, or we get a late bed run because of something on the trucking part of it, but for those specific reasons, we try to get all our food deliveries, all our bed deliveries, and all our deliveries by 9:00 AM, long before our employees come in at 10:00. Our first shift for employees will be at 10:00, and then for those specific reasons that you brought up.
Just, only because it just threw me off, but if a delivery is coming, there must be employees there, right?
Well, we have the, our managers there, but they park on the side of the building.
Okay, all right.
So we try to keep the back strictly for our employees, even, even with the employees we have on a busy day, our back still doesn't accommodate all of them, so we try to keep the managers on the side of the building, and then we try to keep the employees in the back.
All right, so then if, if, basically, if we're incorporating the scheduling of deliveries...
Yep.
You're already doing it, but if we incorporate that into this, to say that that's what you're doing...
Yep.
To avoid, you know, the shift...
Yep.
That's coming in, that the shifts don't start until after 10:00, deliveries are expected to be in by 9:00.
By 9:00.
Um, that's... That language, does that, feel like that addresses it?
For the most part.
Without an on-the-ground sort of way to?
Yeah. And with all due respect, I'm not saying there isn't a time when we.
Right, I mean, again, it's the acts of God kind of things, I understand.
That's the routine.
But it's the same thing with like, you know, when we do the same thing for, you know, trash pickup and things like that. The occasional pickup is one thing, a consistent, you know?
Exactly.
Problem is not the same thing. Okay. The only thing, I, I guess, and I understand every point about the infiltration thing, I, I get that, the, the comment in here was, if I, if I read it correctly, was talking about getting what would be a baseline first in this, in this suggestion, I'm just saying.
And that was my concern is requesting, I mean, I'm all for, but requesting a baseline on something that we know is submerged.
Right.
I just, just because of the language, that's the only reason I brought it up.
Right, I mean, that's.
Is there a way, or I'm trying to think, I mean, rather than, if not burdening the applicant in the beginning to say, we want you to go find out these things and all that, is there a way to put, put it in where if in the future it can be definitively determined that it is this site that is doing that?
That would have anything to do with it.
That would, that wouldn't have, I, I mean, the only way, I mean, unfortunately, the only way to do it is have a baseline. They have to block up grimming manhole during wet weather, or obviously, any time of the year, it has to be a 24-hour period. Ideally, you like to have it for at least three, 90 days, so you get some seasonality and you get some weather. I, I don't think that line can be done.
That line can't be shut down for hours.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So, that's a main line. In order to do a transmission line, proper way is 90 days, so you have baseline.
Okay. Well, I mean, again, I'm, I'm not, I don't have a, a dog in this fight as far as the comment. I just want to make sure that, you know, we've addressed it as thoroughly as we can and come to our decision. That's our, the board's right, so that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, we, we hashed it out as far as we can.
Mr. Kukoc, did you, this come up during an IDR, at the infancy of this proposal?
Came up after.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Kukoc, is there, is there a, an applicant or a complaint about this? Is that all this was generated?
No.
It's.
Okay.
I mean, it's just one of those things that if you could get somebody to do this, that would be great, but.
If I recall.
If it was an easy, if it was an easy thing, burden to do, we would do it. We wouldn't hesitate.
Yeah, I, I mean, if I recall, you guys had to put in a gigantic drainage system when, in the onset of Wamisit Lanes, correct?
Right. That never came up there.
Okay. And who maintains that?
They just actually did it. The Wamisit Lanes, that drainage system is for the abutter and the Wamisit Lanes maintains it and they just had it done this year.
Really?
All cleaned out.
And you, and you assume that cost? Even though the water's coming from the abutter?
That's, that's part of the original permit.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for doing that, I appreciate that. Someone's got to do it, right, Jay? Somebody's got to do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Still me, right? Okay.
Still you.
It's all me.
It's all you.
Yeah, I think so. All right, yeah, that's fine. All right, so, so public hearing, anyone in the audience with any questions or comments or concerns on this, please step forward. Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Before we close it, I just want to run through this because, I, I, actually, I don't know, we're going to close it, just, the one thing is, I noticed on the plans, you just rattled off all those waiver requests. They do not line up with what's on this plan in terms of, so I don't know that we have them anywhere.
Correct, there's a couple that have been removed from it, from the plan.
Right, but you got, you got up to eight, if I heard correctly.
Yeah.
This only went as far as six and you're telling me some are removed, so.
Two were removed, correct, so, from the.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like them to submit a revised waiver letter.
I'm sorry.
Or just submit a revised letter showing what the waivers are.
That's, well, I was also going to have it put on the plan, that was the other thing.
Yeah, on the plan, but.
Yeah, because I need, we need this to, to kind of close the loop here. The plan here can't go in like this, so.
Yeah, but I was just going to suggest that if, if you're voting on the waivers, Bill can tell you which ones not to vote on and give it up for it. It'll be added to the plan.
Actually, let me find out, I mean, what is, what is the feeling here? Do we want to just have all this cleaned up and brought back in? Or do we want to deal with it? I mean, I'm, I'm leery of the, you know, of the things that get done after. We've been trying to stay away from all of that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May, may, so, this applicant is coming for the November 4th for a different matter. I would suggest that we continue this and have them clean up the revised plans to reflect the waivers and everything that was discussed tonight. And then, it'd be reviewed then on the November 4th meeting.
Do any members have any problem with the town planner's request?
I, I'd just like to comment on that. The, the issues are small, that have to be added to the plan. We can vote on the waivers now. The reason we're going to have two separate permits is it's October 21st. We'd like to get this done. By the time the permit gets drafted and then goes through the 20-day appeal period, we'll be out of this construction season.
Right.
So, you'd still have the ability to, even though it's apples and oranges, you still have the ability to say, hey, you've been here two weeks for the U.S. special permit, you didn't do this, you didn't dot this, I didn't cross that team. So, if, if the board would be so inclined, that's what we're looking at, is a construction season. And it's.
To be, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, we recently ran into the same issue where it was approved, other, a different application was approved by Plan Board, the revised plans were not submitted in a timely manner, and it's still being reviewed by the town, town engineer, because that one involved engineering aspects that were additions. So, in terms of completing, getting the 20-day appeal period, the revised plans will need to be finalized one way or another, so.
I, I understand, I mean, we, we've been trying to stay away from the, the having things done after the fact. I mean, we also have had this on our agenda for some time and it's been continued, that wasn't us. So, you know, out of respect for the town planner's request, I, I'm, unless the rest of the board feels strongly about it, I'd rather not overrule a request of the town planner and do this, you know, piecemeal, which we've been trying to avoid doing. So, I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but that's, it's up to the board, obviously. Feelings, thoughts, comments, concerns?
I would rather get this.
How long's it going to take you to do it, Al?
I would rather get this as complete as possible now and fix what has to be fixed between now and the 4th, or whatever date. So, they, they'll know what they can do. So, if we do, if we can do the variances and move on from there, I think we, we should. This has been a very tenuous meeting in some cases.
My only question though is, can we close, how can we do that? Can we close it, vote on the waivers, but then accept new information in?
We, we can post what we're going to accept.
Well, there isn't any changes being made to the plan, there's a few little additions being made. I think you can vote on the waivers anytime.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, how fast can you turn around a plan? And that, and that's, I understand, and that was in the case that you're talking about. What is your timeline of turning around a new set of plans with the proper waivers on it identified and addressing all of the planners?
We could do that in one or two days, that's really quick.
I mean, it does.
If that, if that's the case, then we can, we can action this subject to receipt of what you're going to give us. And it'll be sitting there when we come in to sign the plan. Is that correct?
Um, yeah.
Is that doable?
Yeah, yeah, we can turn this around real quick.
Okay.
Again, I'm leaving it up to the board, I, I'm just saying that we, we've tried to stay away from having anything outstanding when we're done with these. That's, I'm just, for consistency's sake, that's why I'm bringing it up, that's all. I mean, again.
I understand.
I'm one, everybody else has their opinion.
No, I understand, I mean, we, we're trying to eliminate that process of having things hanging out there and then ultimately leaving it up to the planner to chase it and we're, we're left out of it.
We're outside the process after.
Correct. Leaving it up to the planner to chase.
But again, like I said, I'm calling the rest of the board for their feelings on it. Mr. Fowler, you know, you have your suggestion. Mr. Ryder?
You know, I'm not, and I understand, I know we're up against a weather time crunch and that's my only concern. If we were a month, we were in September, I'd say, let's wait till the next meeting. Obviously, they'd like to get this done because if not, they're not paving until April or May. So.
Mr. Chairman, my, my opinion is that we identify the waivers. Oh, I'm sorry.
Come right ahead.
Mr. Delaney?
No, that's okay, he's already started.
I called on you, so we're going to stick with you.
No, I, I agree, you know, we're up against the weather. If, if this goes into the winter, the, the new parking spaces are null and void. And, you know, with the snow and this and that, they might even lose a couple of parking spaces out front. Where right now, if we approve this thing, okay, they can get their parking spaces and it makes everything the way it's supposed to be. Now, we sign the plan, we do this, we do that, I, I think we should approve the, the project. I think tonight is a good night to approve it.
Can I ask?
And they, I don't want, you know, the thing is, I go there too and I use the ball now. I think that this plan should be approved because they do need it. And I hate to see it put off till April.
Mr. Pataia?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Mr. Delaney, for jumping in. I thought he was looking at me but speaking about you.
I mean, they give you side eye, I'm sorry.
That's a pretty bad thing. That's pretty bad, I agree. I don't want to look like you.
No, you don't.
But, in the essence of time, Mr. Chairman, I think we should identify the waivers he wants, put it on paper, approve it, get it done and, and, and move on. I mean, I don't have a problem coming in here this week and, and signing the plans or whatever, after approval, whatever, but 20 days in, in the time and it is October, so, but, my opinion, so.
Okay. All right, like I said, I mean, I will agree with the board's feelings, my only comment is, I know we're up against the weather season, but the continuances of the hearing got us to this date too, so.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to make it easy for everybody, logistically, how long does it normally take from the time you vote till the permit's ready? Sometimes it takes two weeks, depending on the, how busy the office is, so.
There have been times when Mr. Sadwick or myself or anybody else in my, that position would say, you want this signed expeditiously? You bring it around to the, to the board members who haven't been able to get here, call them up and they'll sign it.
Stan? You're talking about the writing of the permit?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying, I know the board members can, but this isn't the only project.
No, I'm talking about those people signing the plan.
Yeah, so I'm saying, if it's probably not going to be gone through the process for at least a week, a week and a half, then to keep your comfort level, you know, it's not like it's going to get drafted tomorrow, so, you know, we're all trying to push for the weather, but if it's logistically something that isn't going to get done quickly anyway, you know, why put a burden on the staff? That's, I don't know how long it takes to turn it around, so.
Yeah, I mean.
I agree.
It's not a set time, but that, you're actually making my argument of waiting.
Um, so, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So, Mr. Chairman, typically, we can't even write the drafts for two weeks until the minutes are approved.
Oh, that's right.
And then, we say about two or three weeks after that, given the other responsibilities of the department.
I mean, you know, so you're talking about.
You're talking better part of four weeks of.
That's a general timeline that we tell the public. Obviously, sometimes it's sooner, sometimes it's later.
They're pushing your window at that point.
Well, I mean, and again, not, not suggesting you do this, but I also know that in the past, we've had petitioners who've brought in the permit, it drafted, and then it's reviewed. That, that's, you know, that's their, their choice. It's still going to be reviewed internally, but nothing stops them from, we've, I know, we no longer have in before us anymore, but we, we have had representatives who've come in with it, drafted for it and just turned it in.
They can do that, yeah, and then we.
And then it's just reviewed. So, I mean, how much that speeds the process, I honestly don't know and I wouldn't commit to it being a speedier process because of it, I'm just saying it might.
Part of the process that is probably the most time-consuming is if you don't issue it prior to the minutes we voted on, then we'll pave it next year.
So, that's a standard.
The minutes have to be done on the 11th, the 4th.
Right, so it wouldn't, probably wouldn't happen anyway. Like I said, I'm leaving it up to the, to the members, I just threw out the pros and cons.
If, if the minutes aren't approved till the 4th anyways, I think getting everything, what, you, you're past that window at that point.
So, in this case, it may not matter.
Unfortunately, we don't know what two weeks will bring, otherwise.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, usually, if it's a simple case, we can work off of the recordings of this video, the live recording, but in some instances, most of them, we do need the minutes, and so that's why we tell the general public that we need the minutes released and then we allow for two or three weeks after that, so, just to be clear.
Okay, so, I, I think in this case, I don't know that we're going to get into the building season either way, whether we approve it tonight or not, is what I think I'm hearing. Does that sound accurate to you as well?
We don't know, we could have.
Well, my, my whole thing is whether we do it or not, obviously, the object is to, to, to try to, to try to make it work. I mean, I can do asphalt whether, until frost doesn't get into the ground till January. So, obviously, that's my thing, but the things I can do is set all the bollards, do all the pre-work.
Get it.
Ahead of time, so, obviously, the faster I start the process, if you're comfortable with it, then the better it is for me, regardless of how long it takes them to do it versus starting that point and going another five weeks after that. I don't want it to sort automatically soon, because I lost four or five weeks in October that I can't make my project work.
I think, I think setting bollards, there's not a permit for that anyways.
No.
That's within the guidelines of his property that he can do that anyways, so.
But other things he can do too, so.
Well, I know, Mr. Fowler, you would like to vote tonight.
Yes.
Mr. Ryder, what is your preference?
Sorry.
Mr. Fowler's preference is to vote tonight.
Yes.
Vote tonight.
Vote tonight.
Full time.
Okay, so then, then my next step would be, that's the pleasure of the board, so, need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, motion carries. I need those list of waivers.
List of waivers.
Yeah, I, I need, like, I physically need to go through these because I don't have them anywhere.
You don't have a copy of the?
Do I have?
Well, it was from July 3rd and it wasn't very clear to me when you were saying them, which ones were changes or not, so, if you could hand us the version that's been added.
Oh, it's, okay.
It was submitted a long time ago, too.
So, I just struck, oh, waiver three.
Okay, and then, were there any changes to these?
I think you have to vote on those, Mr. Chairman.
That's why I wanted like a revised.
So, there's six, correct? Six waivers?
Six.
So that we know what we're voting on.
What's the score?
So, what are these, are these just notes of yours?
The curb stops is being moved. That's a waiver.
But gee, what's the score? Gee, what's the score?
So, down here would be the amount?
A means of stopping a vehicle.
It's one, okay.
You're gonna take off the one for the curb stops because we've already added in.
We just stopped.
Mr. Ryder's-
I'm sorry.
Safety. We're removing the, they requested a waiver for curb stops. That is waiver, hold on a second, I'll tell you.
Do you have that waiver number? Here, I'll tell you.
I don't have my wish known. It is waiver, 5429, section 5429.
So, waiver six on this sheet?
Yes.
We're removing that waiver request.
Correct.
So, he crossed out three, six and seven.
The seven will now be crossed out.
That's why I suggested we continue, that we have a version.
What's the score?
This is my discussion tonight.
TV.
What's that?
Six is gone, yeah. Yeah, so three, six and seven.
Okay.
And then I have my condition.
Those don't go into this room. It's gotta be more than that, that was about 20 minutes.
Yeah, this is a waiver, but I just-
I gotta do the other side.
Yeah, but I just wanted to talk to you before you got to that, is that they're gonna submit revised plans showing this and then reflecting the waivers on it. They were gonna have a condition of 9:00 AM for deliveries and then these conditions were gonna be put in place, I guess as is. There was no real discussion about it.
So, those three go, but they're all gonna go in as part of the main-
What are they playing?
In the waivers. So, will you do the waivers first?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then when you get to this part, it wasn't clear where the light was going.
Yeah, no, we'll do that. All right. So, first, we have the request for waivers. So, on the waiver requests that are submitted here, there are one, two, three, four, five waivers being requested. The waiver on this sheet as it's being submitted here, waiver of number one, is striking the word gravel and inserting the word paved, okay? It's in the second line. Waiver two stays as it appears here.
24.
The waiver that is listed as waiver four, now our purpose is it becomes number three, okay? Waiver five listed here becomes for our purposes waiver four. Waiver six listed here is being withdrawn. Waiver seven, as listed here, is being withdrawn. Waiver eight becomes waiver five. And that in its second line also removes the word gravel and inserts the word pavement. All right. So, we have the waivers as submitted. Do I have a motion on the waivers as discussed, revised and appearing?
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so a motion of-
Second.
Motion, I apologize, in, there's one other type of change in here. In waiver number four, in this second line, where it says two catch bases, that's struck out and changed to one. So, that's the only other one, but the motion accepts that?
Sure.
Okay. So, the motion's made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries on the waivers. As to the modification of site plan special permit itself, the additions that, from this evening that I know, we have, the plan will be revised to include and show the, where is it?
Where are the narrow?
The, the, the-
Narrow spot.
The 20, I believe you said 20 feet?
20.
20 feet.
That's what I can choose.
So, it's comment number one from the town planners' comments. That will be shown on the revised plan. The waivers as listed here this evening will now appear on the revised plan. The revised plan will also include whatever it is you end up with, the devices to protect the fenced area.
Yes.
Whatever-
Well, probably just put a note on there that says, you know, permanent devices to protect, you know.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as there's some notation of that.
I.e. bollard.
Yeah.
No parking signs, correct?
So, then comment number three in the planners' is the signage for no parking on the west side of the rear parking area to ensure public safety. That will be shown. The number four, which is the no parking signs, will be in the areas demarked for snow storage in the rear parking area and, oh, the lighting. There's gonna be additional lighting in that back area now that needs to be put in for the-
Did we ask for a waiver on that lighting?
Uh, no, not a waiver. What we submitted was the existing plan.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And they're just requesting potentially having additional lighting in the back.
Just because now you're pushing all the employees on it, sure.
I have the lights, so.
Yeah, that's fine, but that'll be showing that there's lighting in that back area for-
And where will it go?
And where will it go? Where it is.
Where will it, where would you like it to go? So that we're clear on that.
I don't have a preference, as long as it's light in the back pocket. I mean, how you light it is fine.
Is it off the building?
If I was gonna put it anywhere, I'd like to put it behind my wall that I make without the bollards, towards the gas company out back, number one, so it doesn't interfere with my neighbors, so everything faces my parking lot towards my building. I have lights that come off my building now, light my parking lot.
Right, right.
I have two of the stand-up lights that are the same as what my parking lot is. I'd like to stay two of them on the backside of the push walls where they can't be hit by a snowfall or anything else and they just face into my parking area.
All right, so play with that. So, just, if you just show where they're gonna be?
We'll put those on.
And obviously, you know, the light has to come in, can't spill off.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the zoning bylaw, there is requirements if you follow those.
Yeah, that way I don't interfere with my neighbors to, behind me or to the side of me.
And just like how you submitted the lighting plan for the current lights, I'd like to see that as well for the new lights, to show the dimensions, et cetera, the information of them.
Any other requests?
Yeah, one, I just have a question.
I have a drain now. I have lights that come off to light up my parking lot.
Mr. McLaren, is it a reason why you can't put all of your lights around the building as you have now on the building with the proper down shields so they're only addressing what you want to light up?
I do.
But why do you need lights out on freestanding also?
Only if they require more lighting.
That's a request for safety for the employees parking back there.
Yeah, I know.
That's what the request was, to have additional lighting.
But if you have the lights on the building, which are never gonna get hit-
No.
With the shields.
Yeah. I mean, I have the shields that are on the back of the building now. To be honest with you, maybe that I can have them look at them to see them, but my old backyard lights-
Why don't we do this? Why don't we leave it as a, you have lights currently?
Yeah.
If it's determined by the planning board that the lighting that is on the building now is insufficient once the parking lot is redone, you'll be required to add additional lighting as per the planning board's request.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
That way it's built in, if it turns out you can light the parking lot sufficiently, we're done. If not, we can ask for additional lighting and you'll be responsible and be able to put it in.
Yeah, there's lights on the back of my building, only to light up the parking lot.
Okay, so that's-
Pipes in the ground.
That takes care of your comment.
Put the pipes in the ground before you-
I suggest third one, conduit in, just in case.
Yeah.
Yep.
Once it's in, the board will check out the area and- Yeah. We'll deal with it at that point. Are there any other requirements that I missed?
Sure.
Conditions?
This is all right.
And ultimately, it's also conditioned on the submission of those plans with everything we've asked for appearing on them.
And then can we set a date for the revised plan, so?
You have homework.
Well, you said you need about a day, so-
We're in agreement of one and-
By the end of the week, they should be submitted?
Absolutely, yep.
Sufficient?
Yeah, just an understanding of when to anticipate them.
Soon as possible.
I mean, faster's better, but no later than the end of the week, all right?
Absolutely.
All right, so that's the, that's the motion?
You have still homework.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to that? Okay, we have a motion for the approval of the modification of the site plan special permit-
Second.
As requested with the conditions as listed this evening and the condition of the plan being submitted.
So, move.
All right, so the motion made, do I have a second?
Second, whichever way you wanna do it.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Understood.
Oh, I thought you were gonna take the other thing.
No, that's ours.
No, 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 that goes over there. That was Mr. Hanley's gift.
That's right.
Yeah, don't make it that.
He's here so much.
No, no, I don't blame him. Good luck, Tony.
Thank you.
I got this from the last meeting.
I know these guys.
Oh, it got continued because it was at the 10/7 one?
It keeps improving and improving, that place.
It's gonna get continued to-
My grandson gave it to me.
Yeah, the 10/7 one?
I didn't talk about you tonight.
You got any new business?
My last meeting.
Old business?
Yeah.
Let's make-
It's going on before, yeah, we had our-
Yeah, I just gotta keep it. All right, so moving on to old business. We have any old business to discuss? Hearing none. Do we have any new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if this is old business, but for, initially for the December 2nd date, we only have three board members and Alex Fowler, our administrative assistant, was waiting for confirmation on if the board would like to change that date to December 9th. And that would allow us to update our deadline schedule for applicants and public, so we would, that's-
Yeah, I think I saw some comments come in. Mr. Ryder, you're fine with the 9th?
Sure.
It's the 9th, right?
Well, we didn't hear from everyone.
No, I'm saying, but we wanna switch it to the 9th. Mr. Fowler, are you okay with the 9th instead of the 2nd?
Of December?
This December.
No. No, I already-
Were you, were you not gonna be one of the people that was there on the 2nd?
I already explained that.
No, I'm just trying to get the clarification, so you wouldn't be-
No, I will not be here.
Or the 9th, right?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Delayed?
No.
Neither of those two days?
Neither of those days.
Very good. I think that's what I thought I understood anyways. Mr. Fratelli?
Good, both days.
Either way, and I was fine either way.
Either way.
Since we're gonna have the exact same three members, no matter which date we have, we might as well just leave it as the 2nd because we're not gonna have more than three members, period.
That's fine.
So, that's fine.
You don't hear administrative stuff?
Yeah. Or, I mean, there are things that we can hear, like, you know, we kinda accidentally bumped the family suite. We could have voted on that if the petition had wanted us to, three would have been enough. But anything that requires a fourth, fifth vote would get pushed.
Can you proxy vote?
But I thought they only need three votes for that.
No, no. Can you proxy vote?
No.
Can't do that, you gotta be here.
Well, actually, actually, I take it back. There is a process by which you can call in and be present at a meeting, but I know there are some requirements of how necessary that is for it to actually be allowed and I'm not sure whether or not we'd really qualify.
No, it's just a question.
I think if it was a matter of-
What I would say is unless some emergency situation came up that required more than three of us to be here?
I think if it was a matter of, of, they, every project.
Yeah, it usually comes up when we're up against it by not responding for a vote and we could wind up-
Right. So, I think it'll be important to us, I think, to make sure we let petitioners know, certainly with the next meeting, that the December 2nd meeting will be one that will not be able to be, you know, most things will not be able to be voted on. They should get their things in early or expect to wait till the second meeting in December. All right?
I'll go back to the 21st.
December 16th was only gonna be four board members.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll just leave it at that, so four, barring some issue, but that's just, we'll do it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if any board members are gonna not be attending the meeting, they could just let us know via email. That would be very helpful for the administrative side of things.
All right.
So, the dates are December 2nd and 16th.
Yeah, we're leaving it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Write that down.
Sir?